Portion of our meeting. We had some public, since our last meeting, which was June 15th, we've had some public communications as follows. From Harris to Ron about a student matter. From Sandy Eden about graduation attire. From Karina Ravenel about GRB DIA concerns. We've also had various questions from parents. Not addressed to the entire BOE, but on aspects of the restart plan. I think that will be answered during the presentations and also the public comment tonight. So that is the public communications, written communications. The president's report. First of all, I want to recognize individuals that are retiring. And that includes Eileen Ippolito, Jody Walsh, and Catherine McCarthy. All of them are valued employees that we will miss very much. I think if you think of each of those teachers, each of them is somebody that so many of their students are going to remember as the one teacher who made such a difference in their lives. So it is, it is a bitter, it's always a bittersweet moment when we lose valuable employees. And it is now as well. I also want to say goodbye to Caitlin Riley, who is leaving us and has also been a valued member of our team. So good luck to Caitlin. And just, I know that you all are waiting for what Mr. Phillips has to say. But, so I'll keep my president's report short. On June 26th, after many weeks of waiting, the DOE issued the road back, a guidance document for New Jersey school districts. At the press conference announcing the release of the plan, Governor Murphy was unequivocal in his assertion that in-person instruction would take place in September in New Jersey schools. The governor repeated that assertion in his regular press briefing today. And he was also unequivocal. Our plan here in Glen Ridge is in keeping with that assertion and the state requirement that we release a document to the public no later than one month before the start of the new school year. We respect the opinions and feelings of all the members of the school community, and we welcome your questions and comments. That said, we know that we do not have all the answers. No one does. I want to thank our administrators who've been working diligently to figure out a workable plan in a very compressed timeframe. I also want to thank our entire staff for their patience and wisdom in an unprecedented situation. Please remember, as we go forward in this meeting, that every BOE member is a parent. And every single one of us faces the prospect of sending a child into an educational setting in September. My own daughter is scheduled to start student teaching in a public school. But in the midst of these concerns, we have to move forward, knowing that circumstances may change. We are ready to adapt and adjust according to those circumstances. And with that, it's time for the superintendent's report. Mr. Phillips?
Director, you're muted. Yep, sorry about that. I first want to recognize the three retiring teachers. All three of them are veteran teachers who've had enormous impact, not only on, within their classroom, but within the school building that they work at and within the district. Kathy McCarthy came to us in 2003. She is a math teacher at the high school. She is the advisor to the National Honor Society. She teaches AP Statistics. She is a dedicated educator who gives an enormous amount of her time to make sure her students are successful and are leaving their years at Glen Ridge High School prepared for that next level of education. And she'll be sorely missed, not only by the staff, but by the students. Jody Walsh joined us in the September 2006. She is a first grade teacher at Forest Avenue School. She is the definition of professionalism. She's involved in school operations, dedicated to the students, kept parents informed, served on district committees. Just a joy to be in her room. She was one of the favorite, my favorite rooms to visit because she always had Mo Williams, who's my favorite child's, children's author, characters throughout her rooms. Always enjoyed going into her room. And Eileen Ippolito, who joined us in the fall of 2001. She is probably one of the most positive individuals I know. She just develops a nurturing classroom year after year. Our students and parents fall in love with her. She looped, when we had a looping initiative, she went down to third grade, stayed with that class, and taught them again in fourth grade. She was, again, another veteran leader among the grade level and within the school. And it's hard for me to imagine Ridgewood Avenue School without Eileen in it. So it will be a tough adjustment for the school. I wish all three of them the best as they move on and hopefully they enjoy their retirement. Tonight, I want to go over the overview of the reopening plan. I will start by saying that there's been a lot of challenges. Because the information isn't consistent, it's changing. We're getting new information all the time. So I appreciate the parents who have been understanding and flexible as we put bits and pieces of this plan together. And last week, I was able to send out an email outlining the reopening plans for our district. So I'm going to share my screen with a PowerPoint presentation. And Betsy, can you just confirm you're seeing it?
I'm seeing it.
Okay, great. So we'll get started. Just a quick timeline. On March 13th was the last day that we had in-person instruction in the district. It was that evening that the governor announced that schools would be closed starting the following week. We had already made that decision and already made that announcement. So we were prepared for it in the sense that we knew it was happening. Our last school day then became June 17th. And around the end of May, beginning of June, we started a committee for our school reopening and started having those initial discussions as we looked to the fall and what might happen as far as instruction. On June 29th, the state released the road back, which is the guidelines for reopening school in the fall, which was obviously helpful to have that information and start laying down some of the ground rules for us reopening the school. We are scheduled to start school on September 1st. So, you know, it's a short amount of time to transition from being in-person instruction, going to virtual instruction, and then developing a plan or multiple plans for reopening come the fall. As we started gathering information about the reopening, there's a lot of different organizations out there that we reached out to, or they provided information. Or there was the health information we received from different organizations. The professional organizations, including the Department of Education in New Jersey, the superintendent organization in the state. A lot of states sent out their guide to reopening before New Jersey. So we had an opportunity to review a bunch of different state plans. And obviously, especially in the European countries, they were opening, reopening their schools. So we got a little understanding of what they did and what worked and what didn't. And finally, just getting information from the school community. We did survey both the staff and the parents, and we got their feedback on concerns they had about our virtual instructions and concerns about returning back to school in the fall. And we've had some student input, whether it's in small groups or whether they're serving on some, one of our committees. So when we started our reopening committee, after a couple of meetings, we realized it was a huge task and it was important that we get a lot of feedback from individuals. But we needed to break down that process a little bit more because it was just too overwhelming for one committee to handle. So we ended up forming a bunch of subcommittees that are listed there. We had representation from every school on each committee, whether it was staff and/or administration. The administrators led the committees, but the staff members were the ones who were providing us a lot of feedback and input, along with us reaching out to get information from different venues. When the road back came out, the governor stated that there needed to be a district reopening committee that involved some of the community members, some students, administration, board members. So that, so we formed that committee to help us really oversee what we've done, give feedback on what we've done, and that helped shaped what we ended up deciding on when it came to a hybrid model. Sorry. So our hybrid model, I think first and foremost, when we decided that we really started looking at what were our options at the time. Remaining virtual, which we didn't think would be an option coming in the fall. But at that time, we hadn't had any official word from the state. A hybrid model, which is a little virtual and a little in-person. Or full-blown, traditional, everyone's in, full day, part day. So we threw around those concepts and looked at the different possibilities. In the end, we really let the health and safety drive where we were heading. We wanted to balance that, obviously, with an enriched academic experience. But the health and safety of our staff and students came first and foremost when we started talking about reopening the schools in the fall. And so we decided to, much like many states did, create a phase system where, you know, phase one, let's see, we're going to open a little bit on the easier side in the sense of we're not bringing everyone in, we're not going to have a full days. Let's see what happens when we have what I'd call a softer opening. And so our phase one is a hybrid model. When we started looking at hybrid models, there are different versions of them. There's split sessions where half the students can come in the morning and half the students can come in the afternoon. There's AB weeks where a group of students would come one week. And the next week, a different group of students would come. There's AB days, very similar AB weeks, but just with days. And then you have to start looking at, should you operate a shortened day or a full day? So when we started looking at these different models, we did go back and forth a little bit. In the end, we decided on AB days. We discussed, you know, different options within that AB day. You could have students come in for, you know, the group A come in Monday, Tuesday. Maybe Wednesday be an all-virtual day, and Thursday, Friday be group B. So we looked at pros and cons of different arrangements of the AB day, eventually deciding on just doing AB rotation days. When we presented that to the district group, there was a concern for, at the lower levels, of just the need based on the experiences at that grade level of really getting those students in every day. And that's the pre-K through grade two level. And part of that is their ability to work independently in a virtual setting. Part of that is just the importance of having more interaction with their teacher based on the reading skills that they're learning at that age. So we looked at the challenges and decided because of the size of our schools, it'd be more feasible for us to possibly have a split session. And we ended up deciding doing a split session from pre-K to grade two, an AM and a PM group. They're coming for two and a half hours. And the focus during those two and a half hours will be on math and language arts. They will, so if you're in the AM group, you're going to have your math and language arts in the morning. But you're going to also have a virtual experience in the afternoon where you're going to get some related arts, your science, your math, and some character ed lessons throughout the week. So it's important that we're continuing with our curriculum in all facets. But every day, the pre-K through two students will have a live experience with their teacher. Grades three through 12 will have an AB rotating day. They will come in. The A group will have, be live day one. The B group will be joining the A group, or they'll be joining them through Google Meet. So there'll be some continuation of the curriculum because the lessons will continue day after day. It won't be a repeat of lessons where the first day, group A is getting the lesson, and the second day, group B would be getting the same lessons. We're going to be avoiding that by having group B join group A through Google Meet to see that lesson. We are looking at having 35-minute periods during the day. Traditionally, at Ridgewood, they're 40-minute periods. At the high school, they're 42-minute periods. So we're close to matching what we would have under a full-day schedule. As we're looking at other districts, we're seeing mostly an AB day model with districts having at least one day of the week all virtual. We decided that it was important for us to get as much live instruction as possible. So we decided not to have it an all-virtual day built into our week. Some larger districts, because of their size, instead of doing cohorts of two groups, they may be doing cohorts of three or four groups. So students might only come in once every three days or once every four days, depending on the district. So that would be our phase one. And again, we will be monitoring how well that's working in the sense of the health and safety of the students. Are we seeing any situations evolve that cause us concern, whether it's COVID-related? We're going to be monitoring what happens with the pandemic on a local level, county level, and a state level, that if we feel there's going to be concerns, we're not going to look to increase what we're currently doing that could lead to greater spread. We're going to be looking at our protocols that we put in to make sure that they're working effectively. And if not, we may have to adjust them. So there's a lot that will happen, a lot of new procedures, a lot of different expectations that traditionally hasn't happened with the opening of school. And we realize it's going to be a change for the parents, for the students, and for the staff. If we imagine a four-to-week period that we would be in a phase and we reevaluate if everything's going well, and if the state allows us based on any requirements or mandate that has been taken up at the state level, we would go into a phase two, and that would have all students report on a shortened schedule. So we'd be looking to populate the buildings with the full population. And again, we'd be monitoring what would happen during that time. What are our challenges? What do we, what are we going to need to change when we look to move into the next phase of having them full day? So we're going to use that experience to dictate how well and what needs to be done to move into phase three, which would be more of your typical, traditional classroom, school day. All the students in for a full day. Lunch being served, recess happening. Those students being a little more interactive through their elective classes. Again, a four- to six-week period that we're going to evaluate that things are going well, then we're going to start looking at bringing in some after-school indoor activities, which we're going to limit in order to keep the building safe as possible. We're not looking to have any after-school activities until phase four. As far as the instructions, some of the concerns that we have with the start of the year is just, there's going to be a social-emotional learning component to the start of the year. These students have not been in-person instruction since March. It's important that they get reacquainted with each other and with the school and the procedures and the new protocols that are in place. A lot of students could be feeling anxiety about being back in the school building, about being in a large group setting that they may have not had a chance to experience the last few months. A lot of students may have experienced grief over the last several months. So there's a lot that we're trying to prepare for in order to get our students ready to start learning again. We also recognize that we need to do some diagnostic testing towards the beginning of the year that we might have traditionally waited until October to do. So it's important that we know where the students are at and how to best address deficiencies if they exist. We're also concerned that if we wait too long to do some of the diagnostic testing, that we could be back in a situation that we're back to a virtual-only experience, and we don't have the data that we think is important for us to start individualizing instruction. One of the components that we need to make sure of is that we have a consistent use of our technology, that the teachers and students know the expectation, and that's part of being prepared if we have to go back to a virtual-only experience. And I talk about a virtual-only experience, and it could happen in a variety of ways. It could be that we have a classroom quarantine for two weeks. That classroom might be virtual-only for two weeks. It might be that we have a building that closes down for a two-week time period. So the building might be having the virtual-only experience. Or it could be that the state moves to a virtual-only experience. And again, we need to make sure our students and our staffs are prepared for that. And part of that is setting expectations with the teachers and the students about the use of technology and making sure that they're proficient with the tools that we're providing them. We have started doing professional development. We started doing it last spring when we're in the virtual-only experience. And I, many teachers learned new tools to become more proficient in a virtual-only type of instruction. We started, the lower-grade teachers who didn't have the same experiences just because of the age group they taught, of working with the Google Suite, we made sure during the springtime that we were providing workshops for them. So they became more proficient in the use of Google Classroom. And then the expectation moving forward is that it's a tool that's going to be used throughout this school year. And one of the areas that we also realized is that we really had to better prepare the parents for the experience. And that's almost in every phase that we've looked, we've looked at over the summer. When we looked at our subcommittee, was really providing more training for the parents. So they have a better expectation, more knowledge of what tools are being used, and hopefully for them to become a little bit more proficient. But also giving them the tools to, how to manage their child and the expectations their child should have when it comes to the academic component of a virtual experience. When we start talking about instruction, I'm focusing in a lot in on the hybrid and students being live a portion of the hybrid and being virtual a portion of the hybrid. But there's also, the state came out on Friday saying that parents can opt their children into a virtual-only instructions. And we're working on, the administrators and myself are working on getting information out to the parents and about what a virtual-only program will look like in Glen Ridge. And then we will also be asking parents to notify us if that's an option that they're going to choose to do. Some parents have reached out to me about homeschooling. And homeschooling is a completely different option than a virtual learning. Virtual learning, the learning is being driven by the teacher. The teacher is having contact with the students, is responsible still for assessing the student and monitoring the learning that's happening with the student. In a homeschooling setting, the parents are taking the school or the teacher out of the program, and the parent is becoming responsible for the learning, where they're doing the assessing, they're monitoring the growth as far as the learning is concerned. Typically, homeschool does not involve the district that much. Under these circumstances, we're going to be flexible and making sure that we're working with the parents who decide to homeschool by offering them the curriculum, offering them some of the content that we have in forms of textbooks and online subscription to make that process a little bit easier for them. So when we're looking at options for instruction, you're going to see the hybrid, again, ran by the district, virtual-only, ran by the district, and there's a homeschool option that's ran by the parent. Started mentioning anxiety, grief, possibility, some fear about coming back into school. And this is where our wellness committee came in, and they really started, not just with the students, but looking at the staff, the parents, and what activities and resources we can provide to make everyone feel they're in a good place when we're starting, talking about being back in school. So there's a program that the district is purchasing for the teachers called teacherfit.com. We're bringing a program to the parents called Peace at Home Parenting. And we're fortunate that early in the last fall, we started, we formed a social-emotional learning committee that really has started taking on the social-emotional component and trying to develop a plan in the fall, hopefully to have it ready for the 2020. And that committee has made a lot of recommendations as far as reopening for the schools and making sure students are where they need to be socially-emotionally in order to learn the academics. A lot of focus on resocializing the students. We're talking about developing a student mentoring programs with the teachers and students to make sure that we're following up on every student as we're going through, again, a major change in students' lives, whether they're having the hybrid experience or the virtual-only experience. We want to make sure that we're having a greater connection to our students because of the drastic changes that have happened in education. We also realize it's important for us to communicate frequently and effectively that expectations are well-known, procedures are well-known. And as I mentioned, that we're providing parent teachers in all aspects of this, training in all aspects of this plan. I shared the health and safety, some of the protocols we're going to have in place in my letter to the public. It's, again, a big focus of this is developing cohorts. What we want to make sure is that we have these student groups, and they're staying together as much as possible. And that's one of the ways we say safer is making sure that people are not exposed to a large number of individuals. Less exposure to individuals, less risk. So we're looking at our cohorts and making sure that they stay together as much as possible. And that means, you know, we're not going to see in sixth grade where last year the students changed classes individually, and every class that went in, there was a different group of students. They're going to stay in homerooms like they had done prior to last year. We don't want to start sending kids through the hallways as frequently as you would in a traditional setting. So we're going to make sure that the students stay in the classroom as much as possible, and the teachers coming to the classroom to teach a lesson if it's a, if it was a different than their homeroom teacher, as opposed to in the past, the class would move to the teacher's room. We're going to try to eliminate, eliminating large congregations of students. Again, just a reduction of risk, and this means not having large group lunches or recess. We're going to make sure that we have separate entrances and exits at grade levels. And we're looking at staggering times where individuals are, students are entering the buildings, just trying to keep the interactions to the minimal amount of people as possible. These health and safety rules are what we're seeing in the road back. We want to make, we will be doing health screenings, including a temperature check. The health screening will be done at home. We'll require parents to answer some questions prior to sending, bringing your child to work or send to school, or having them come to school on their own. We would, we're going to advise you to do a temperature check prior to having your child leave the house. But we will also be doing one prior to them entering the school building. And we're doing the same with our staff. We will be expecting our staff and students to use hand sanitizer whenever they're entering the building or a classroom, or when they're leaving the classroom. Again, trying to keep the risk of infection down to a minimum. Everyone will be required to wear a mask throughout the day. Everyone will be required to wear a mask throughout the day unless there's some kind of ongoing health condition. And that will require a medical note from a doctor and as we get closer to the opening of schools, the building principals will be reaching Out to the parents about the notification and the procedure To work through some of these protocols. We do, are expecting that windows and classroom doors will remain open while they're permitting. We are looking at using some outdoor learning space as much as possible, but also considering the safety issues are always A concern when we're dealing with young students. We want to make sure that we're still enforcing some of our safety protocols. A lot of this is a balance between providing a safe environment as far as a pandemic is concerned, But also looking at our security protocols and how well we can balance the two because they're not always working hand in hand. We will be, we've created cleaning and sanitizing schedules that will be strictly followed. As far as visitors, we are going to limit individuals coming into our buildings as much as possible. They will need to have appointments, they will need to go through a similar health screening that students and staff have Gone through, they're going to have to wear masks. We're just trying to be as diligent as possible under the circumstances. As far as quarantine going, if we are seeing an individual with symptoms, every building will have quarantine area. Where the nurse will follow up on that, those students or staff members or visitors for that matter, who might be exhibiting some symptoms. I want to stress and you will hear this until The start of the school year, please stay updated on the New Jersey travel guidelines. I know there's over thirty states right now on the travel guidelines. If you are traveling out of state and you go to a state that's on New Jersey's travel guideline, you, the student will be asked Required to self quarantine for two weeks. So we will be following that mandate by The governor's office. As far as determining quarantining, it's really us working with the Bloomfield Board of Health, which is our local board of health. They will be advising us, making recommendations, and they will also be the ones conducting contact tracing. We will provide every assistance that they need, but they take the lead when it comes to contact tracing. We've made a lot of investments as far as PPE equipment and looking at our facilities. Hand sanitizers will be put in every classroom. They'll be put out throughout the buildings and the hallways by the bathrooms and they will be put out in the exterior of the buildings by entrances And by the playgrounds. We will have a detailed cleaning and sanitizing schedule that we strictly followed and our custodians will be trained To make sure that they are very, they're very aware of our expectations and we are monitoring to make sure that they're living up to our expectations. Our custodial staff, since we are not having events in our buildings in the evening, Will be able to shift their staff and have more custodians on during the school day, which will allow us to sanitize the building And clean the building more frequently when students and staff are in the buildings. We are putting Plexiglas up in office areas typically where you would see Someone who's having a conference with an individual like a principal's office or the secretary's desk At child study team members where it's a closed in area and there's usually a sit down conversation occurring. We will have signage throughout the buildings. We will be putting decals on the floors to indicate Social distancing and obviously protocol reminders about washing hands. About using hand sanitizer, about the typical procedures that we've put in place During our COVID pandemic period. We are going to be using an electrostatic disinfection machine. A lot of people might have seen these, these are misters that That put us a mist of disinfectant in the classroom. And then about after ten minute dwell period, the custodians come down and wipe down the areas. The charged particles Cause a greater adherence to surfaces and disinfects. Allows us to disinfect a room at a much quicker pace than if we were to try to wipe down the entire room By hands with a disinfectant. Our special education continues to have some challenges that are associated with the spring closed down where New referrals and IEP revaluations weren't able to get To start or be completed because of the virtual setting. So we, they will be busy rescheduling or completing the new referral testing and the revaluations. We want to make sure during our shortened day that all students who are Scheduled to get related services, that they are getting those related services. We want, we are going to be training our paraprofessionals so they can be more effective when we're dealing with students who are In a virtual setting in the Google Meet. So when that happens with an AB schedule or Or we go to an all virtual instruction, our paraprofessionals can be more effective. And again, providing resources and training to parents will be a big part of making sure that we're successful in Providing the assistance that our special education population needs. Child, co-curricular activities and childcare. When we start looking at the athletics that happen in the high school, fall athletics were originally scheduled to happen in mid-August. That has been pushed back to September fourteenth and I'm sure they will continue to evaluate as that date approaches. We are evaluating any co-curricular clubs to make sure that Clubs that are, that can be effective in a short, in a virtual setting Will continue to run. Again, there'll be no after school activities, so Clubs that would need to meet in person would not happen Until we're at a point where that phase four where we're allowing after school activities to To start up again. Childcare, we understand the difficulties that some families may have, especially when we're looking at An AB, AM PM schedule for the lower elementaries and an AB day for the Ridgewood Avenue Schools. We still will be offering before and after care services. We are developing health and safety procedures for before and after care. Only students who are intending live instruction that day are going to be eligible to participate in before and after care. So if you're in an AM session at Forest Avenue School, you can use before care. But you cannot have to use after care because we have a group of students coming in in the afternoon that we need the building space for. The PM session can then take advantage of after care. At Ridgewood Avenue School, those students who have live instruction that day Can take advantage of our before care and after care. We are working to find childcare options For parents who may need a little more childcare than we're offering. We have reached out to local Childcare providers and then they are all booked at this time. We are looking at the possibilities of An outside group perhaps running an offsite for childcare. But we're trying to be as proactive as possible to provide some childcare Because we know that's a major concern for some families. One of the things I want to stress when we start looking at this plan is, this is a plan for, I'm going to say for the moment. Things are constantly changing in our world, as far as a pandemic is concerned. We, just last week, the CDC came out with two recommendations. Or one last week and one the week before. It changes the way that we're going to eventually operate. The DOE on last Friday came out with the virtual only option guidelines That we then have to go back, interpret, work through, make sure that we're setting up a program that meets their expectations. They are also supposed to be providing civil, school districts with a checklist, which has not come out and that checklist is there to make sure that we're Putting into our plan, everything that needs to be in our plan. So what we're finding is almost on a daily basis, something is changing To our plan or components of our plan that may alter it. So it's important that we understand that it's fluid, it's a living document and what happens With our detailed plan in one way could certainly look different the following week and it's important that parents understand that. We also have a couple other components that are important to understand that will have an influence of what happens educationally in Glen Ridge. When I put out a staff to, a survey to our staff, we have about fifteen percent of our staff Who said they were likely or highly likely to request some kind of either leave or accommodation About coming into the school building for various reasons. And having fifteen percent of your staff in that position is difficult. But we also had another over twenty percent of our staff saying they're not unsure what they're going to do at this point. So that is a big component when I talk about how fluid the plan is. It can change depending on the circumstances, obviously staffing being one of them. The other is looking at our students. And when we start looking at, when I put a survey out to the parents, We saw that roughly about fifteen percent of The parents answered that they're likely or highly likely not to be sending their students to school with another, give or take Twenty percent of our, the parents saying that they're not sure at this time. So how we're operating during the school day and what type of program we offer as far as Are all virtual will depend on how many parents are deciding to keep their kids home for that experience. So that's something that we have really two situations that could dictate or influence our plan that we're closely monitoring And get, and going to get additional information in the next coming weeks to make sure that we're making Most sound decisions based on the information we have. As we start looking about moving forward, you know, Friday I shared with an overview of our reopening plan And that's what I'm doing today with this presentation. Next week, we'll be looking to release a more detailed reopening plan that will include some of the more formal procedures As far as screening students and the what if situations and The cleaning schedules of our custodian. So that will happen next week. We will be sending out To our parents, as I mentioned earlier, information on the all virtual option. And then requesting the parents to please inform us what they're looking to do. Within the next two to three weeks, we're going to need the principals to develop The cohorts, the lower elementary levels, the AM PM groups and at the Ridgewood Avenue School and the high school, the A and B group. So that requires us to know who's going to be all virtual because that's going to impact what our groupings will look like. We are starting to develop information on our Glen Ridge website. We took down the old COVID plan that included a distance learning and we're starting to populate it with a reopening resources. And by the end of the week, there will be FAQ up About the reopening for the fall. And you will be receiving a lot of communications from either my office, the building principal, The school nurse or the classroom teacher in the next month. There's again, a lot of new protocols, they're very fluid and it's important that we're setting up expectations and giving you Given the school community the information they needed, they need to be prepared to open up the school year. So my presentation, it covered a lot of information. But it's really just, just the tip of the iceberg. Because we continue to develop more detailed protocols, we continue to get additional information that changes our plans Or raises new questions that we need to address.
Okay, thank you Dirk.
You're welcome.
First, before we go to public comment, does, do the members of the board have any questions for Dirk?
I, I do.
Okay.
That's, that's an awful lot of work for a summer and only half a summer. So great job, first of all. Sounds like you have an awful lot to do and a very short time to do it. So I hope you're able to leverage what administration we have, Barbara and the other administrators and anybody else that you need. It's a lot of work left to do, so I hope you have the support that you need. I want to be clear about one thing and it's something that you said very early on. We, and based on the governor's mandate, we have to offer some in-person option To all students. And we also have to give students an option to go all virtual. Is that right?
That is correct. So we're currently having those two models that we're developing along with the third option. Or our third concern of if we have, if we are, end up being in all virtual mode Or making sure that we're developing that experience too. So there really, we have three things on the table right now.
But currently, day one, we could not go all virtual if we wanted to.
Correct. By the governor's mandate, we could not.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, and you mentioned some making sure that the administrators are providing some support. I do want to recognize administrators have been just as busy, if not as busier than I have been this summer. I'm trying to get their buildings ready and developing these plans and serving on the committees. And along with numerous teachers who have given their summer to work on these committees To make sure that our school's ready for whatever situation we may be come September one.
I just wanted to follow up quickly on what David said. Is there any indication that, that?
No, I can hear him.
I was going to say That's, that's the current guidance from the governor that we have to offer in person. Is that, is that possible? That's going to change?
Everything's possible, I will say at this time. And we've seen things quickly change. Our information coming to us at a, you know, at a late moment. And that happened when we originally closed in March. And I think that's one of our concerns is that we're not getting information in a timely manner that would let us plan properly For the best educational experience for our students.
So you have to be planning multiple tracks at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Okay, so is there an afternoon session for grades three through twelve?
There will be some virtual experiences going on for grades three through twelve. There'll be some small group instructions, some enrichment activities. Teachers will be following up with those students who are virtual only students. So it's, it's going to be a variety of things are happening in the afternoon.
And so the students would know what to do based on their classroom, Google Classroom?
Correct. Expectations will be very clear to the students.
Okay, so when you say cohorts, are you also considering cohorts for grade seven and eight?
I'm not, and the reason is why? Because in seven and eight, when starting grade seven, you start seeing A lot of shifts in classes where they're not all taking the same math class, they're not all taking the same world language. They're not all taking the same elective. So half the day, they're, they're not, unlike sixth grade where they're all taking the same courses. In seventh grade, half their periods, they're not taking the same courses and that. And then you're sharing a lot of teachers with, with the same courses, and that, and then you're sharing a lot of teachers with, with the high schools, so it becomes a scheduling issue at that building.
Have we considered, I have a bunch. So have we considered a staggered start, like they have in Europe, where we start with the littlest kids that need school in person the most and are least likely to transmit COVID?
We have not considered that, and part of the reason is, you know, my interpretation of the governor's mandate is that every building must have students in the building at the start of the school year, and that's something I would need clarification otherwise.
So will staff or students need to have a negative COVID test to start attending school?
That, no, we're not requiring that, and that's something I consulted the Bloomfield Health Director about. It's not a recommendation he is making. He said, in his words, it would be just a comfort move, that it wouldn't really serve its purpose.
Are we gonna have any testing, regular COVID with the student population or the staff?
We do not have any COVID testing planned with the staff or the students, unless we require it if we've had a situation.
Will children of staff members that are enrolled in our district be able to attend both days instead of going one day in person and one day virtually?
That, we're not planning on doing that. We're treating them like any other student in the district, that they're, they're gonna belong to cohorts, because if, once you start mixing them, it creates a greater risk if you have them in both groups. It's also a concern that, you know, and from an equity point of view of providing certain students with what some would consider a more beneficial experience by being live both days.
Are we providing masks to students and staff, and what kinds?
We are providing cloth masks to both students and staff. We are gonna ask the parents to also bring in an extra in case their child forgets it on their way to school. We will have disposable masks available in case they're needed.
Will every classroom have open windows that open?
I think there are, one classroom I can think of off the top of my head that does not have windows but has a ventilation system in it that brings in fresh air, and that's at the high school, the band room. As, we have some office areas that will, in similar situations that don't have windows.
So speaking of air exchange, I've heard some of the recommendations are like six to, I think, 12 air exchanges per hour. Do we even know what our air exchange rates are in the various classrooms?
I don't, I don't have that information. That's something I can get from our contractors who just, you know, we have four new ventilation systems, and, you know, that's where we're fortunate to have four new ventilation systems in place, but I can get that information.
Is that something perhaps Paul can speak to as well?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So there, there are minimum levels of ventilation specified by the code customarily for outside air. Whether we meet the criteria you just referred to, I'm not certain. We're fortunate in the respect to the fact that we've just completed these HVAC projects in most of the schools, and we have what are referred to as testing, adjusting, and balancing reports that will tell us what the CFM or the volume of air being exchanged. I'd also like to point out that schools, unlike a lot of the office spaces that we're familiar with, draw their outside air immediately from the wall where the unit is located. Typically, we have very few ducted systems in schools, which is more representative of kind of administrative areas and things alike. Typically, it's either a, what's referred to as a unit ventilator, drawing air immediately from below the window, or it is a dedicated air handler unit, as you might find, say, in the auditorium or gymnasium, where the air is, the outside air is taken into the space and then similarly exhausted, so it's not being commingled, so to speak, from space to space. And it's possible to adjust those systems for higher volumes of air and longer durations through our new control system as well, which we just installed. So we're hoping that we should be able to satisfy all the recommendations of the NGA that recently came forth, which the underlying recommendations are actually put together by an organization called ASHRAE, which is a well-regarded, you know, professional society of mechanical engineers.
Have we discussed having classes outside?
We've had some, some discussion of it. There are some pros and cons to this situation. As far as my concerns, first and foremost is safety. We've sat here about a year ago as a board and with the public talking about safety, security upgrades, and making sure our buildings are as safe as possible, and then if we're looking to put all the kids outside all day, you're eliminating a lot of the security measures you've put into place. There's also concerns about the academic environment, where it's not climate-controlled, a lot of possible distraction, not having running water. When we talk about kindergarten classrooms and PK classrooms, by code, they have to have a bathroom in them, so there's a lot of those, that situation. What I am speaking with the principals about and discussing are making sure that we find ways to use the outdoor spaces, but not necessarily have our students out there on a routine basis where it's, it becomes a little more of a risk.
Okay. And then what activities are canceled besides recess, lunch, and clubs? Like, are you canceling labs for science classes or singing and music class?
We are not canceling those classes at this time. You know, it's finding ways to make, to operate under the given circumstances. You know, one of the protocols that we're gonna have in place is limit sharing of items, and that becomes difficult, let's say, in a lab situation. So the teachers are gonna have to look at labs as more of a, not as group work is, but how can students perform a lab individually? And maybe some of that is happening through a virtual experience where they're doing labs at home, per se. I think we're, we are working, Rob Hill, who's our Director of Student Activities, is looking at what happens with music and band and the recommendations their professional organizations are making. Obviously, that's a greater concern for us because of the droplets that are a bit concerned with COVID. So it might be where, and Core is a perfect example, you're getting instruction during the day and talking about performance, but maybe that performance doesn't happen until the afternoon, and it's happening individually. So that's a perfect opportunity for a teacher to use their afternoon in a virtual way that provides a safer environment.
And my last question is for special ed students. Does anyone get related services that are daily, or are we able to accommodate what they're required to get on our alternating schedule?
As far as related services off, I can't answer off the top of my head. Most of the related services, when you're looking at OTPT speech, that's not happening on a daily basis. There may be some, again, and that's gonna be part of the challenge with the special ed I spoke about, is making sure that they're getting all the services that they're entitled to, and Jack DeWet, who's our Director of Student Services, is working with the Child Study Team and our specialists to make sure that we're scheduling and that we still have the, the whole day to schedule those. So in the sense of, some of that may have to happen virtually if it's more conducive, but that is going to be one of our challenges.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the board? All right.
Hi. Dirk, thank you. This is a lot, and I may have missed this when I had to step away for a second, but I just wanted to make sure we all had clarification on the A and B days. So just to make sure we're all on the same page, would you just confirm that it's really like, you know, Monday in A, Tuesday B, through the week, through Friday, which was not the case in the, in the spring, and then the following week, Monday would be B, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
That is correct. So every day, we're all in A and B days. There's no virtual difference.
And you mentioned that, you know, you've spoken with other districts in terms of looking at all these different options, going, you know, doing A and B weeks versus A and B days versus mornings and afternoons and everything else. I know you're very closely connected with the surrounding districts that are very much like Glen Ridge. Can you just give us a snapshot or a general idea of the percentage of the districts that you're in touch with that have chosen to go the same route that we have, or is it much more disparate than that?
The districts that I am in touch with, what we're, what I'm seeing is A-B days, I believe all of them have a virtual day built into the week, whether it's Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. Some are running multiple cohorts, so that instead of doing an A-B, they may be doing A-B-C, they may be doing A-B-C-D. There's, one of the schools is doing one live day and four virtual days for the students when you have that A-B-C-D grouping. A lot of schools are doing A-B days also at the elementary level. I'm trying to, Milburn is doing an AMPM split like we are, they're doing an A-B day like we are, but they're having a virtual day. So I don't know of anyone doing A-B weeks in the, within our local region, and I don't know anyone who's doing full days within our local region. I know when you start pushing out a little bit to Morris County and some Bergen County's schools, they're looking to do some full days, but I'm also seeing some, some of those districts that originally say they were doing, going to do full days are starting to pull back on that a little bit based on what they're seeing with their planning.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Hi, Betsy, I just wanted to have a couple, ask a couple of questions, and thank you, Dirk, and all the committees that I know are working hard to meet these very challenging times. When you decided on the schedule and the amount of time of instruction, can you give us a little insight as to how you came to the differing degrees of time for each of the grade levels?
Well, I think we started when we looked at the A-B days of saying, looking at their base half-day, four hours, that was our starting point, and a little bit concerned anything beyond four hours of not providing lunch, it becomes a long period. But I went to both of the high school and Ridgewood Avenue principal and asked them how comfortable they were just adding five minutes, so instead of having half-hour periods, having 35-minute periods, and we talked about having a working snack, which is not uncommon at Ridgewood Avenue where students have snack in their classroom while they continue to do work, and not as uncommon in the high school where they're doing it on their own. And both principals felt it was something they could agree upon, it gets them closer to their normal length of, of a period, so that's how we decided on the 35 minutes at Ridgewood Avenue and the high school. For the lower elementaries, I was really looking at how much we could fit, how much instructional time we could fit in, but still, but still have enough time in between the sessions to make sure we're able to sanitize the building before the next group comes in. And actually, Milburn's doing the exact same time as far as two and a half hours with an hour and a half or an hour, 45 minutes in between the two groups.
Any other?
Yeah, the, what about physical education and kind of the emotional health piece of this whole planning system? Give us a little bit of insight on that.
Yeah, so at the lower elementaries, they're probably still get some related arts in a live situation, just because, contrastingly, we gotta work in the prep times for our teachers, but most of the related arts will happen virtually, where the, it's, you know, the PE, the TE, PE teacher will put out a lesson to the, where the students can go on Google Classroom and pull down a lesson and follow the directions, whatever they may be. At the Ridgewood Avenue and the high school, they're going through their eight-period days, so that they will have PE and like they normally have at Ridgewood Avenue School, it will be a 35-minute period. I think there, it will be, it will look different because we're not sharing equipment, so we have to make sure, it's, it's gonna be more independent activities without equipment happening. At the high school, or the grade seven through 12, where they typically change for PE, we're closing our locker rooms, which is a recommendation of the rollback because of, you can't social distance in the classroom. So we're cognizant of that, so what will happen in the high school will be more of an instruction during their PE period, and the students will most likely be asked to do more the physical activity component of it, because they're not in their PE clothes in the afternoon, and they'll be required to log and provide evidence that they did those activities in the afternoon.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we go into public comment?
I just have one other question on the, when you're doing the health checks in the morning, that's gonna be a temperature check for all of the kids?
And staff, all the kids and all the staff. We have multiple forehead thermometers, so there'd be, if you've had the experience, it takes less than a half a second to get a reading, so it could go very quickly. We're still working out the protocols on what happens if we get a reading that is high, and we're working with the nurses to make sure that we're not make, having any student be stigmatized by being, calling them out at that point, so we're looking at different ways to make that possible, and that's why we're gonna encourage parents, please take their temperature as a double check. If your child has a fever, please keep them home.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we go to public comment? Okay, we've come to the first public comment period, which is for questions and comments on agenda items only. Obviously, the plan that has just been unveiled is a big agenda item. I need to remind you that we have a two-minute time limit. Anybody who is accustomed to our proceedings knows you get two minutes in the first public comment, you have the opportunity for two more minutes in the second public comment period. I would ask that you please be respectful of the many people that we have with us tonight, and keep your comments to our limit of two minutes. I will be timing it so that I can see the timer. If you have a question or comment, go to the bottom of your screen where it says Participants, click on Participants, and you will be able to raise your hand, and we will do our very best to recognize people with raised hands and, and answer their questions as they come up. So bear with us, sometimes we don't see the raised hands right in the, in the beginning, but we'll try to get you. So with that said, are there questions or comments? And please, when you, I see there are, please, when you make your question or comment, identify yourself and also confirm that you're resident in Glen Ridge. All right, I see Gretchen Kost.
Hi. Can you hear me? Thank you. So I have a quick question for the split days, when you have day A, day B. For the students that will be online attending the live lesson, will there be a moderator online for them so that, you know, they can make sure the technology is working, that the children hear, they are following along, their questions are being addressed, someone separate from the teacher who is delivering the in-person lesson?
Dirk, you're muted. Dirk, you're muted.
Unfortunately, we don't have the staff to provide a separate monitor for every classroom. So we're going to rely on the students making sure that their devices are working properly, that they are logging on early to make sure everything is working prior to starting the class period.
Okay. Let's go back to Gretchen Koss. Gretchen, are you there? Gretchen, you need to unmute yourself so we can hear you. All right, we'll go back to her again. We have Lee Thomas.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I think the most important thing is that, you know, when kids go back to school, we want to create a learning environment, right? Where they feel safe, where, you know, the teachers and students, you know, they, it's teachers with students and students with teachers, they can get along and, you know, be a good, good, safe environment. But I feel like a lot of these protocols are very, it's creating, you know, an environment that seems like it's a biohazard. It could also be like very terrifying to students. And I can't imagine like, you know, parents would, you know, could send their kids into, into school in a situation like this. I mean, it's, it's basically, you're kind of instantly reminding them that there's like death at every corner, right? And how, how is a teacher supposed to teach in a mask for like, you know, three hours? Like, how's that going to be possible, right? And then the students are going to be in masks as well. I mean, it's, it almost seems like it's borderline, like, you know, child abuse. And I hate saying that, you know, I think we have to do better for our students. We have to create a better environment. I think, I think these protocols are going to do more harm than good. And it's, you know, I just don't know how these are going to be enforced. If the kid, if a child, if a student takes off his mask, what, the teacher has to stop class and tell him to put it back on the mask. And this teacher can't get to a lesson, then they're going to hire coordinators to tell students to put on masks. And then the, and then the temperature checks, you know, going to school before going, before entering the building, sanitizing. It's all constant reminder of danger to the kids, right? I don't think that's an environment that any parent wants to send their kids to. I think they want, you know, parents want kids to be in a safe environment where they can learn. Let's, I want to, I want the school to create a learning environment, not a biohazard, you know, environment, you know? That's, that's how I feel, you know, I think we can do better.
Thank you. Dirk, would you want to comment on that?
I agree that learning will look a lot different under the circumstances and that's part of putting safety precautions and protocols in place. Ideally, I would love to be under our normal circumstances where it's, you know, not wearing masks and not having all these procedures in place because it's more inviting and welcoming. But under these given conditions and under the minimal standards that are outlined in the road back, these are things that we need to do.
I understand it can, these procedures can, they can be challenged, right? And the second thing is, you know.
Thomas, you run through your two minutes. If you could finish up quickly?
Okay, I will. So, you know, kids have been hanging out throughout the summer. There's, you know, I haven't seen any issues crop up. I can't imagine they go back to school together, you know, or suddenly they become, you know, deadly to each other, right? So the protocols that are in place, I, I just think they're just going to do more harm than good, right? It's going to traumatize the students. That's all I have to say.
Thomas, thank you. I see Urina. Can we have Urina?
Hi, this is Urina. Thanks for taking my question. First of all, thank you so much for everything that you're doing because it's very clear that you're prioritizing safety. And that's definitely very much appreciated. And my first priority in thinking about kids coming back, going back to school. I had two questions. The first is, and I just happened to be looking at the New Jersey Physician Consensus Statement on school reopening, which provides, you know, guidelines as well. And one of the things that they mentioned is that alternating days is preferable to split days. So I just was, you know, wanted to sort of, first of all, put that out there. And also when speaking to one of the authors of the report, she was mentioning that even when they're alternating days, that best practices is to actually have consecutive days, right? So that you're reducing exposure even more. So again, just wanted to, you know, I understand there's a lot that goes into developing these schedules, but I just wanted to sort of ask that question. And then the follow-up question, separate question is, will siblings be in the same group if they're in the same school? So will siblings be both in either A or, or B?
Dirk?
Siblings will be in the same group, in the same building. So if you're in the lower schools, siblings will be in either the AM or PM groups together at Ridgewood Avenue. They will be in, they're the A group or B group together. The rotating days, A, B days, you know, this is the tough balance you have of trying to create an academic atmosphere in a situ, in promoting health, healthy practices. And this is something that our committees went back and forth on and the decision was, when we look at some of the academic concerns of, you know, if we had a Monday, Tuesday group and then looked at Wednesday as a virtual day and then a Thursday, Friday, we wouldn't be seeing that live group for almost a week. And if there were holidays or breaks put in there, it could even be longer and that was a concern. So we're trying to, to balance again the safety with the academic experience. And that's where, where we landed on the A, B rotating days.
Okay, thank you. I see Greta. Greta Sawa, you need to unmute. There we go.
Okay. Um, in one of your slides, you referred to a phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. But what are the metrics to determine when we move from phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four? And do you have a process in place also to determine if we have to revert back? If we slide collectively out of a phase backwards into another phase? What are the metrics?
Yeah, we would look at if there were incidents, health incidents or spread that happened within the building that would delay any movement to the next phase. We would be looking at the transition rate within the state where if that is getting at a higher number, we would not want to have a larger grouping in the building. And we'd be looking for recommendations with, by our local health director and our school physician.
But are you going to publish some metrics that say we have to meet X, Y, and Z metric to move on to the next phase? Or, I mean, I don't want it to be just subjective when you feel like it kind of thing.
Well, at this point, we're ahead of a very new experience and I'm not at this point publishing these are, these are the metrics and we're only going to operate under these metrics because there is so much unknown at this time. And I think we have to open up under new conditions and see what is occurring under those conditions before.
Okay, but states have a phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, and they publish metrics. So I don't know why we as a school district can't have published metrics too. Maybe not right this instant, but eventually.
It's always a possibility. Thank you. Before we go further, there are many more of you with your hands up and I'll recognize you. If you have multiple questions for us, please say them at the, say them all at once so that we can answer them in order. Now, I see Lauren Mazella. Sorry, Lauren?
Yes, hi, thank you so much for taking my questions. And I echo what somebody has said about appreciating the health and safety and how hard this, this work is, honestly. I have two sets of questions. The first pertains to illness or positive testing during the school year and how that works. If you have a child or a staff member test positive, does the entire classroom then need to quarantine? Who's making that determination? Is it coming from the Board of Health? And when you have, you know, for sixth grade and up, where even if the kids are staying in their own classroom, you have teachers rotating through and then going to other classes. What is the, what is the crossover at that point? And what about siblings? If you have one, if you have an, not an outbreak, but you have some positive tests in one grade and you have siblings in other grades, do those grades then need to quarantine just through transmission or through risk? And then the second set of questions is related to technology. You know, in my experience being in the schools, the Wi-Fi is not so fantastic. How, what's the technology in place for live streaming? And, you know, what are you doing to assure that that's going to work? And how are teachers going to be able to project clearly enough for a live stream when they're wearing a mask? Like, will they have a, will they have a microphone? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
As far as protocols, when we have a test positive, it's really going to be a call by the Board of Health. And these are questions, I've asked similar questions to the health director. If it's one case, are we closing on the classroom? Are we closing down the school? If it's multiple cases, siblings, at this time, the, from, the State Board of Health is trying to create clear guidance on that. So he was unable to answer those questions. So as we're moving forward, any positive cases really going to be the recommendations of the Board of Health to determine how we're handling as far as quarantining is concerned. With technology, we are, we've upgraded our Wi-Fi in the buildings to make sure that we have enough bandwidth to handle the live streaming. This is something as we get closer that we will test prior to the opening of school. And we are looking at a different, a couple of different devices to help us with as far as providing audio during live streaming.
Okay, thank you. I see H Ness. H Ness? H Ness there, you may be muted. H Ness, yes. You need to unmute yourself. H Ness, you need to unmute yourself, please. We, we still can't hear you. H Ness? Okay, we'll come back to H Ness. I see Rod Five. Or Rod S? Rod S?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Rod Scott Thomas, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
One, is there any provision made if we begin in person or virtual to shift to the other? That is, we start going in person but decide we feel more comfortable doing it virtually? Or we start cautiously virtually, but then would like to elect to cut over to the in-person? Do you have the second question now or do you want to do the first question first?
No, go ahead with the second, please.
Okay, the second question is Essex County Teachers Union put out a public letter and they said that we ask that you recognize the obvious. It's totally unrealistic to expect we can safely open our schools for in-person instruction in September. I'm just wondering if you could talk about that, whether you're on different pages or you think they have a point? Just sort of comment on what you think the overall risk assessment is here.
Do you want to start with that, Dirk, or Sean?
You can start with the Essex County Teachers Association. I'll hit the first question.
Okay, we are aware of the Essex County Teachers Letter. We all saw it. I am also aware that Marie Bliston, who is the president of the NJEA, which is their parent union, is in discussions with the governor echoing the same sentiments that were in the Essex County letter. So that's an ongoing conversation. The governor has acknowledged that that's an ongoing conversation. We certainly recognize the concern that our teachers there for all of the issues that are mentioned in that letter. Right now, we're taking, we have to take our cues from the governor. And the governor just today reasserted his very strong feeling that we need to have some in-person education. So until the governor, such time as the governor has a different opinion, we need to have an in-person education plan. That is not to say that we don't respect, respect and care for the opinion of our teachers. Okay, Dirk?
As far as the first question, as I mentioned earlier, the the virtual only guidance came out on Friday, I believe it was Friday afternoon. So I have not sat down and spoken to our administrators about it or any committee. I have an administrative meeting tomorrow where we'll discuss it and start developing some general rules and I'll share that with the committee and I hope to have the plan out to the public and any provisions by Friday. I do imagine for us to operate in an effective manner, there's going to have to be some provisions. If we're dedicating a staff member, and that's, this is a big F at this point, to teach a virtual experience, we can't have students join that virtual experience in the middle and that member becomes unbearable for that staff member or vice versa. Individuals wanting to return to a live format. And then we have a small number of students dedicated to one staff member, making all the other sections bigger. So there will be some provisions that will work out with, in a committee.
Thank you. Nadine Burnett. Nadine, you need to unmute yourself.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. First off, I want to say a huge thank you. I mean, obviously, this is a lot in terms of, we're still in the middle of a global pandemic and trying to figure out how to educate our kids. So thank you to everyone on this call. Dirk, sounds like you've done a good job weighing all the issues and I appreciate the Board of Ed's questions as well as all the parents' questions. And Travis wants to get back to school. Now, I want to, I want to make sure though, you know, I'm part of the Glen Ridge Black Diversity and Inclusion Association. And I want to make sure we still kind of get some momentum on some of the initiatives that we've talked about. So as I hear that three teachers are retiring, I'm hopeful that as far as hiring and having replacement teachers, that we as a district are still thinking about diversity and getting some black teachers, some teachers of colors into these open positions. Is there anything that you're willing to share with us at this point?
At this point, I can tell you that we, I formed a district equity committee and we've broken that into subcommittees also. We had a number of teachers who were interested in the committee and one of the committees that was formed was a personnel committee. And we're working on developing action items to address the personnel matter. I did reach out to one of your co-members and set up a meeting for next week. So we are meeting next week to discuss our work and your work and how we can continue to keep that in the forefront. I will say, I've had a a number of meetings over the summer. I'd probably say at least 10 on the issue. So, and the committees have been terrific. Almost meeting on a weekly basis and to develop goals and action items. So I'm excited at the work that they've accomplished so far and looking forward to sharing that with the public when it's ready.
Okay, thank you. I did see Mary Lynn DeFontes, who is our very own Mary Lynn Savio, but she seems to have disappeared. So Mary Lynn, if you do have a question and somehow we lost you, just hit, raise your hand again and I will get back to you. Now I see Lucilla Giante Menico.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My kids are going to be in ninth and 11th grade. My questions are, instead of having two different formats for in-person and virtual, can the virtual students attend the in-person classes? Like, how are those students already doing it? And then are in-person students risking to be in a class at school with a teacher delivering the curriculum virtually because of health reasons? And the last question is, will virtual students be required to have the video on this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
We're, we're working with our We're, we're working with our instruction committee to determine procedures. We are looking at the video being on at this time. We're weighing the pros and cons based on some feedback that we got from parents about students turning off their video and really tuning out and not being engaged in the lesson. And it was obviously not possible for the teacher to monitor that. As far as students who are, during, during the lesson, the students who are at home will have to go through a synchronized schedule just like the students who are there live, except they're, they're experiencing that virtually, if I'm understanding your question correctly. So in the classroom, you're going to have your live students and the remainder of the student bodies, the, the class, turning in, tuning in virtually. I believe that was a question.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Lauren Talbot. Yes, Lauren Talbot, I, you're unmuted now. Go ahead, please.
No problem. Thank you. I'm a Linden School parent of a first grader Vanderchun and wanted to thank everyone as well for your service. I have a two-part question. One is, is there a current date that's set for parents that need to alert the district that their students will not be attending in-class sessions? And then second to that, for those that choose to do that, do you imagine any impediment come spring? Say there's different data that comes out, an impediment to then rejoining physically? Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
We don't have a set date at this moment. Again, I'm looking to send an email by Friday that would state a date because that's information that's relevant to us moving forward with creating the in-person groups. As far as, we will be looking for people who decide to go all virtual to commit to a certain time period. I have not, as I mentioned earlier, I've not spoken to administrators or the committee because the information was just released on Friday afternoon. That's something that we will work out through our discussions and that will be part of the information. So we may say, for example, if you're going to go all virtual, you're at least going for the first marking period. And then we'll reevaluate after the first marking period. But that's a discussion that we're going to have and, and through the administrators and the committee.
Okay, so more information to come. Thank you. Sarah Skalit, or Skalit, please unmute yourself. There we go.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Sarah Skalit and I'm a resident, I have two students at the high school. And one of my questions, I think, has been asked or answered, but I'm still not completely clear on this. I'm just wondering the degree to which a parent could decide. There's two, I have two questions. So the first one is, I'm wondering the degree to which a parent could decide maybe to do in-person learning, maybe wanting to, if we wanted to opt out of certain classes in person or have our children just there for a part of the day deciding that some classes were more important for in-room instruction than others? And whether we would be able to sort of move back and forth if, if the situation, if we're not comfortable with the numbers and the way things are going, to move our children back into a virtual-only environment? And my second question relates to the quarantine room, the quarantining. I believe Mr. Phillips said that the quarantining area would be for people with symptoms. And I just wanted to clarify if that was correct or if actually it was for people that maybe had had exposure but weren't displaying symptoms.
Okay, thank you. Dirk?
Yeah, your, your first question, we really haven't considered about students who may want to only attend part of the day live. I, I think there's some logistic issues. If you have a, you know, attend your first four periods live and you decide you want to do the rest virtually, that you're not going to have a lot of times to get back to your house to get to log on to your, your next period. But that's something, a situation I will bring up to the high school administration. It's, it's not something that we had considered at this point. And which is happening a lot when we're working through the plans. There's this, a lot of new developments and new questions and ideas pop up all the time. As far as the quarantine space will be, if, if someone is under quarantine because of a given condition, maybe it's because they traveled out of state or they shouldn't even be coming into the building, to be honest. And so the quarantine room is really for those when we're doing our health checks and our health screening, that, that question should have been answered no to begin with and they should never have been sent to school. But for those who might be showing other physical symptoms would be going into the quarantine room.
Okay, thank you. Narcisa Farzogh, and I apologize if I have massacred your name.
That's okay, no worries. Thank you so much for taking my question. The first question is, will be the checklist of symptoms released? Because as of a no fever, it's just one symptom of COVID. And also, we know that some symptoms coincide, like person who's having allergies, they obviously will have red eyes, they will be sneezing, their throat will be scratchy. So that's the first question. Also, I am a mom to a preschooler. And preschoolers learn a little bit more different than, than all the children, primarily through play and socializing and how it will look in pre-K. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things we, where the nurses will be reaching out to the parents is just making sure that you're notifying the school nurse if there's some medical condition that your child may be showing a symptom but really isn't because of, let's say, allergies. Those are important factors to know when we're evaluating a student. The CDC actually, about a week and a half ago, came out with updated guidelines when you're evaluating individuals through health screening and mentioned those types of situations that we're not over-evaluating the student who may have allergies or some chronic conditions that you're aware of and assuming that it would be COVID-related. So those are discussions that we've had with the nurse and the nurses and will continue to train with them and making sure that they get that information out to the parents of they're aware of any ongoing medical condition. As far, I'm sorry, the second question just stood to my mind.
Can you repeat your second question, please?
Yes, I can. I would like to hear more how the pre-K play and learning will look in reality because such young kids, they don't learn from reading books and doing projects independently. They socialize and, so how that socialization and play, group play will look in pre-K class now with COVID? Thank you.
Yeah, that's going to be a challenge for our pre-K. You're, I completely agree with you. Where so many of the social development skills that we learn, that we have, we learned in pre-K and kindergarten where it's based on play and then learning how to share and then developing communication skills where that's going to look a little bit differently, where they're probably doing lessons from, from a distance and practicing that from a distance, where the centers that have been used in the past won't be utilized because of, we want to make sure we're not sharing materials. So it's going to have a, a, a different look than the pre-K has had in the past. And all pre-K programs throughout the country right now are wrestling with, with changing their format. And, but as far as the lessons being taught, it'll be the same concepts. It will just be taught differently.
Thank you. Gabby Militello.
No, go ahead. This is Michelle Militello, her mom.
Sorry?
No problem.
It just so it comes up on the screen.
No worries, no worries. Seven Fern Cliff, I'm a rising fourth and a rising seven. I have four questions. RAS's HVAC system was not working as of March when the buildings closed, particularly the heat in the auditorium and the sixth grade wing. I'm curious as to whether or not it's been fixed. Second, under what criteria will students and/or teachers be granted a mask exemption? Three, a clarifying question. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, that you're going to have choir? And does that mean with masks on and indoors? And fourth, were any student leaders a part of the reopening committee?
Okay, thank you. Dirk? Heat in grade six.
Oh, well, just HD, HVAC in general at Ridgeway Avenue is at the completion stage. A few weeks ago finalized the air conditioning and we're, they're just working through a punch list. So the heating is working. We did have a problem in our auditorium and that wasn't a design problem. We recently went out to bid to replace the roof on the auditorium and replace the old, the older rooftop units that provide us air and replace them with rooftop units that will provide air conditioning and heat. So, and that's actually, the approval for those bids are on tonight's agenda. Once we have those approvals, we'll be moving forward with those projects. As far as a criteria for not wearing a mask, we will request a doctor's note explaining the reason why a child can wear a mask. We may then ask the doctor if a face shield would be sufficient instead of a face mask. So we're going to try to work with the families but also provide, making sure that we're taking the precautions necessary to provide a safe environment. Choir, in, we, we're looking at the guidelines. They, they may be teaching them components of singing without doing the singing or talking about the development of a song. And it's not my area of expertise. I don't want to get into too much. There may be, at the high school, that there's some individual rooms in the course rooms where people could sing. And they can do it with masks on. At the high school graduation, which happened on Friday, and I thank all the high school administration for putting that all together and finally getting the high school graduating seniors ceremony. Four course seniors sang and they all had masks on when they sang. And it was beautiful. So it's possible. And we did have students on our reopening committee. We do have students on our reopen committee from the high school level.
Okay, thank you. I see Kim Engel. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Engel and I'm a resident of Glen Ridge. I have four questions. My child will be starting kindergarten at Linden. This will be our first experience in the Glen Ridge Public School District. Echoing another question, I would like to know what, sorry, I got distracted by something. What socialization could we expect for kindergartners? They are five-year-old, five years old. So I wanted to know what that would look like? Is, will it mostly be purely academic at six feet apart, basically, is what I'm wondering? To clarify, if they do a split session, does it mean that the other half of the day when they come home or before they are live streaming at five years old? And for kindergartners as well? If they do virtual, so this is my third question. If they do do virtual, how many hours of a day should I be expecting my child to be on a screen? And it sounds like you're putting together the virtual plan if we opt to not be in-person at all. But do we know if my daughter will have the same kindergarten teacher that she has been assigned to? Or can we expect to have an entire, a new teacher now? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dirk?
As far as what socialization and how it will look like, I would suggest reaching out to the building principal who could give you a more thorough answer just because they're working with that grade level a lot more than I am. And it could give you a better answer. But an important, a component of education is socialization. And there will be socialization activities going on. It would look different than what we've had in the past because of social distancing. But we're going to make sure that it stays as a component. And, and we're still going to be teaching socially-emotional lessons throughout the day. And a lot of times when you start looking at your language arts curriculum, those concepts are integrated into the language arts curriculum. So they will be reinforced as we're teaching language arts. We, we do see the live session in the lower level being mostly academic. But again, at that level, the academic take, it looks a little bit different than it would at a, a sixth grade or eighth grade level. So the feedback we got was it's important that students that are young, at the younger grades have language arts and math live as much as possible because of the two building blocks, academic building blocks for those grade levels. There will be some, as you mentioned, opposite time, some live streaming. Some of it will be live streaming. Some of it will be recorded lessons. And this is what happens in a virtual experience. You know, it's a combination of virtual and live depending on the availability of the teachers. When we're looking at the related arts, you might, you're probably going to see more of a live lesson. When you're looking at social studies or science lesson that the teacher is doing, well, that they're going to have the session with the other group. So they wouldn't be able to do a live lesson. So it would be a recorded lesson. As far as a new teacher, if you choose all virtual, those are, there's a chance that there will be a new teacher. We're going to look at the best way to provide an all-virtual experience. And those are things that we're considering when we're, when we're looking at, if we have enough, let's say, to form a regular-sized class, it would make some sense and that we have a teacher dedicated that class doing an all-virtual experience, which would be a little bit different than those students who are coming in for a live experience. But there's a lot of unknowns and we're in the development stage of that as far as I was concerned.
Thank you. Dolly Soto. Dolly, please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Rob Dowell. Can you hear me?
Okay.
I'm Dolly Soto.
Okay.
We're the parents of a rising first grader at Forest. And first, thank you all for, for the work you've put into this. We heard the question and answer earlier about holding school outdoors. Given the difficulty we had in getting our kindergartner to sustain any engagement with the virtual learning in the spring, we wanted to strongly encourage the administration and the board to explore the idea of holding school outdoors further, especially as a means to keep the younger children in an educational setting for full days. Everything we've seen suggests that transmission rates are significantly lower outdoors and children are adaptable. They would probably get used to the outdoor classrooms. Most of us probably went to school without air conditioning. Tents could be erected in fields and heated. As for code requirements for bathrooms, we were wondering if anyone has checked if these requirements could be waived or satisfied in another way. As for security, perhaps parents could be enlisted to help with making sure that the children are safe and no strangers are approaching. So could you speak to whether you'd be able to give any more thought[1763.92] So could you speak to whether you'd be able to give any more thought to an outdoor learning type of program? Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
It's something we can continue to delve into and look at. I can certainly reach out to our county superintendent to find out about code requirements. But you start mentioning some other concerns when you're talking about bringing heaters, whether they're gas powered or electric, that are potential issues. But I think there's some, as you mentioned, there's some positive components to it when you're talking about reducing COVID risk. And that's something that we can look into.
Thank you. And just to add, when we talk about waivers, we're talking about something that has to come from the state. The executive county superintendent is an employee of the Department of Ed. So, so it would be a procedure of going to the state to get those. I see Gregory Pavliv. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Chloe. Chloe first. Chloe? Here we have Chloe. Okay, I don't see Chloe. So let's go to Gregory Pavliv. And Chloe, if you, if you still have a question, please, I will get back to you. Gregory, can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Beautiful. Thank you. I feel like a commercial. So I'm Gregory Pavliv. I'm a resident of Glen Ridge. Father, my daughter is at the high school, and I'm the director of vocal music at the high school. I don't sound like it. I've been sick for nine weeks now, I suppose, but I'll be cleared to come back. I can't wait.
It's good news.
So thanks. First off, thank you so much for the plan. Not this year, obviously, but in years past, I've been a consultant to other school districts. And Glen Ridge Public Schools really knocked it out of the park with how we implemented online learning so quickly. So I'm just proud of everybody and how we did that. My question is about curriculum. I read through the plan. I thought it was very well done. I read the survey results that were posted online, and I saw that it said about 47% or so of parents would be opting to keep their kids home. And out of the, those that were left, we're talking about 25%, one group on an A, and 25%, I think, on a second day coming in. So my concern is this, mostly as a parent, but also as a teacher, we're expecting our kids to get 182 days of instruction, and we expect them to pass all of their classes that they take in their road. But in this online learning situation that we have, where we have three different groups of kids getting instruction in basically three different ways, I did some research and conferred with colleagues in other school districts, and the expectation for completing 182 days is highly unlikely. So the reason that is, is this question I'm asking you. Since online learning looks very different than in-person schooling, and we have to consider that the teachers are teaching to one group of students in the class, there's another half of students that are at home basically watching a video, whether it's recorded or live, and then 25% will be popping in and out. That means that teachers would then have to basically teach three different ways. Those students all have different learning styles.
Mr. Powell, if you could wrap up, please.
Right. So because of all the learning styles that all the students have, and the expectation that we won't cover all the 182 days of curriculum, has the district given some idea or discussion into what we can do to make sure that all students are able to get through all 182 days of instruction that goes beyond the grades? But I'm more concerned about the retention of students, in addition to my daughter, that they will be prepared for the next year of school.
Thank you. Dirk?
I think one of the things we, at least when I polled principals who reached out to the teachers, during the time that we were on virtual instruction, which is roughly about three months, most of the curriculum was covered in all areas. There might be a week or two behind was reports I got. That being said, I'm not saying the amount it was covered is not always the same as how depth it was covered. And those are information that's tough to determine without some kind of diagnostic testing. And that's something that I mentioned earlier, that we wanted to do early to get a gauge of where students are at. When we start looking at delivering instruction, it's important that we're trying to meet all the needs of all our students, and that becomes more difficult when we have different models of delivering it, whether, you know, live or virtual. And those are some of the challenges and unfortunate circumstances we are in because of the pandemic. And those are some of the adjustments that we have to make. So during the school year, the charge will be on the principals and the teachers to make sure they're evaluating where they are in the curriculum, where the students are, how much they have grasped, and what adjustments need to be made. And this is difficult for us to determine since we haven't been through this process before. So we're going to make sure that we're monitoring it very closely, getting feedback on a more frequent basis than we had in the past.
Okay, thank you. I think we have Chloe back now. Chloe, please go ahead.
Got it this time. Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have, I have three comments. The first is, you know, like everybody, thank you for everything you're doing. I feel like you're in a really difficult to, probably impossible position, trying to pull this off, especially with the last minute addition of the all virtual plan. And I want to acknowledge how difficult this is, and like everybody else. That said, I would like to follow up what I think it was Gregory just said about the unrealistic expectation here that teachers could possibly teach, especially for my children at Ridgewood, at a younger age. The idea that that third, fourth, fifth graders could watch what sounds like six or seven hours of online instruction up to three days a week, or that teachers could, you know, possibly keep the attention of anybody in class or out with their masks on. It just seems, I mean, it feels a bit hopeless, to be totally honest. And I'd like to urge you to, you know, if you have a, if you think that I'm wrong, and you can explain how they can do this, that would be great. If not, I would like to urge you strongly to consider the Linden and Forest model of an AM PM split for these elementary kids, because it just seems like it's a setup for failure. And then quickly, I think I already been running into my time. Another thing that was a red flag to me earlier was when you said that the teachers were going to be provided with cloth masks. That's worrisome to me. And again, with already up to 35% of the teachers, you said, not committed to coming back. I can see why the unions have the position that they do. And I'd like to urge you, even with the lack of federal funding, and again, the position, it's a difficult position you've been put in, if you have to, please lean on the incredible fundraising power of our, of our parent groups. I mean, if we can raise $100,000 for a playground, we can raise money for PPE for our teachers and show them that we care about their health. I mean, as I said, my children are younger. I'm not actually that worried about their, as worried about their health as I am about our teachers right now. So, and as I said, I'll listen offline. But thank you so much for all you're doing. And I think we're all going to end up virtual anyway. So I hope there's a good, strong backup plan in place for that. I know you're not allowed to say it out loud, but there was a lot of hugely successful components to the Ridgewood Avenue program last year that I would love to see continued. That won't be possible under the split squad. So that's all. And if you can address any of that, any of my stream of consciousness comments, that would be.
That's okay. Thank you. Came in right at two minutes. Dirk, do you want to address that?
Sure. Yeah, there's obviously challenges that will be, that we're certainly hearing over again, that teaching in this model is not ideal. We're talking about half the students live, half the students online, masks being worn, social distancing. These are not ideal conditions. And this is part of requirements for us to open up, and these are mandates are coming from the state level. And then part of our responsibility is try to make the best of less than an ideal situation. And we'll continue to work on that and listen to suggestions as we move forward. We have spent a lot of money on PPE equipment, and we'll continue to invest as we're moving forward with the situation.
I think we're cognizant of the incredible generosity of our parent community. So, and we will keep that in mind as we go forward. Thank you. Shilpa Patel. Yes, Shilpa, you need to unmute. There we go.
Hi, thank you. I have a rising first grader at Linden. I wanted to know, and I apologize if I've missed this, but first let me say thank you, because I know trying to get the schools back open cannot be easy. But of course, I have concerns, as do many people, as we're all on this call today. So a lot of school districts, you know, Glen Ridge likes to look at, you know, it's nationally ranked. I think we all appreciate that. We're, have chosen to be part of this school district for a reason. Other school districts that are also well ranked will be having plexiglass around the students' desks. And I'm wondering if that's going to be happening in Glen Ridge. I would hope it would be. That's my.
Got it?
That's kind of first and foremost. I mean, I think wanting to, and listening to all the great questions and all the great answers and getting, you know, trying to assess whether, you know, all this is good information. It's going to be helpful to determine how comfortable, you know, we feel sending our son to school.
At this time, we are not investing in the plexiglass around the window, the desk. We believe that social distancing in the classroom and that students wearing masks would be sufficient for a safe setting in the classroom. There is a great cost if you're looking to do that to every desk in the district. And but I, you know, to me, there's a little bit of concern too, that if they're already wearing masks, I'm not sure how much you maximize having the plexiglass on the desk either. And then it, then it also then increases your cleaning time that the custodians will have to have in order to do the building in an efficient manner, that they're, they're now looking at cleaning individual plexiglasses.
Okay, thank you. John Decker. Yes.
Hi.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Sorry. Sorry, is that Shilpa? I'm sorry. If that was Shilpa, I think you got your two-minute time limit. So we need to move on to John Decker. There will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting to ask a follow-up question. John Decker.
Hi, this is actually Vicky Decker.
Okay.
In Forest Avenue. So thank you very much for this meeting. It's very informative. But I'm very cognizant of how much work is being put into this and how difficult the task this must be to facilitate. However, it does seem like largely the Board of Ed members have not been involved in this planning process, and are just now getting to ask these vital questions for the first time. Some of their questions were the most important ones that were asked. We've elected them to be our advocates, and it does not appear that they were a major part of the process, which I'm hope, I hope I'm wrong, but that's very disappointing to me. And my second question is also, has there been any thought of tapping into the wide wealth of knowledge and skills in our community, including technology, mental health experts, environmental, medical experts, and more, which I think could bring a wide amount of knowledge to the committees that you're talking about?
Okay, I can take the Board of Ed question. The, remember the compressed timeframe of all this, that we received our guidance on June 26th, and we had until this week to really create a comprehensive plan that was in keeping with that guidance. I would say that we, the guidance required that we have a restart committee, and it had two board members on it. I was on it, also my colleague, Michael DeLu. I also, in my capacity as a president of the Board of Ed, provided updates to my colleagues. When they have questions, either I answered them or Dirk answered them. So this is a plan with many moving parts. And every time a question is asked, I think another question comes up. So it's not surprising that our board members have more questions. In fact, it's a very positive thing. So the board is involved. The board will continue to be involved. And as Dirk said, this is a living document. So we are very, you know, hopeful going forward of more involvement. When you talk about the community, we're very, very grateful for and cognizant of the expertise out in the community. And, and we certainly, on many occasions, have availed ourselves of it. And I expect we will again. So, so that's not, I think that we understand that. But we have so far had a very, very compressed timeframe to do something that's very complicated. So we hope, we always wish that we had more time to discuss things. In this case, it was not, that was not given to us. So.
Betsy, if I could add something, just as one of those board members. Hi. I feel like I've been in touch with either you or Dirk almost every day or every other day. So, Vicky, it's really incumbent on the board members ourselves to be as involved as you want to be. It's one of these things where you get out of it what you put into it. So Betsy and Dirk have given me every detail I've needed. I know Betsy and Michael are two of the people that were on the committee. So that takes care of them. But I've been getting, I don't know how Dirk has had the time, actually, to give me the updates that he has in terms of what's going on in Glen Ridge, and how Betsy has had the time she has to give us the updates that she's been giving us out at Trenton. So we may not have formal meetings, although Finance and Facilities has had its share of meetings over the summer. But like with any member of the public, you don't have to wait for a public session to ask a question. Dirk is available all the time. I happen to have his mobile number. So, and he's usually makes himself available within just a couple of hours of when I want to ask a question. And this summer, mostly it's been on the reopening. And so I feel like I've been as, I've been very involved and not shut out of the process at all.
Also, I'd like to just chime in that we sometimes ask questions that we know the answer to, because just as a gentle reminder to Dirk, who's probably getting two hours of sleep a night, that maybe he didn't get every point. So we're, sometimes our questions are maybe prompts. So, but we, you know, I've been talking to board members, and I've been talking to Dirk and Betsy and other administrators as necessary, and quite often, as David has. So I think that, I think that we are, don't mistake the fact that we're asking questions for the idea that we're not being consulted or that we're not involved.
Oh, go ahead, Ally. I'm sorry.
I was just going a second, Michael said. I think often, questions are asked as an opportunity to showcase an answer that may not have been touched on in the presentation.
Yeah, frankly, the question I asked initially after Dirk's presentation was to highlight the most important part of this to me, which is that we can all talk about this, but it's a third party who's not present, and that is the governor, that's really forcing the issue of physical presence. But, and I asked the question not because I didn't know the answer to it, but because it came at the beginning of his presentation, which was 15 minutes long. And I wanted to make sure that the 80 or, 80 or 90 people that added to the meeting after he started understood that going in, in the hopes of offsetting some of the public questions.
Thank you. Okay. HD?
Hi, this is Harris Duran.
Hi.
I have several questions. A bunch of them are on A2, the Comprehensive Equity Plan that you are voting on the insurance today. Now, the first question is, do we have a current Comprehensive Equity Plan that was supposed to be voted on and submitted to the state on June 14, 2019, for the current years? And my second question is, did we have any insurance vote or an equity plan for years 18, 19, 19, and 20? And my third question is, you're finalizing A2, the insurance tonight, but have you actually have a plan that you're assuring? Because I've went through the last two years worth of votes, and the last time I've seen the vote, the board vote on the insurance plan is in July 24, 2017, about the Comprehensive Equity Plan for the years 17 and 18. And I wanted to know if you're planning on having another BOE meeting so that we can talk about, as you said, this is a living document, that we might have another time to talk about updates and further on some of the. and further on some of the people's questions. And I wanted to finally, if we had some time, do a little bit more about the afternoon services for the high school and the middle school and what they're going to actually look like and what students they're going to involve. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can, if we have a current equity plan, can we actually see it? Because most other school districts have them posted on their website. I've seen most of the other schools in Essex County that have the actual plan that comes from the state that needs to be signed. So, I don't see it on our website. Thank you.
Dirk?
Yeah, we have an equity plan. We can post it on the website. It's not a requirement, but I have no issue with posting it. You mentioned something on June 14, 2019. I'd have to follow up on that. I'm not really, I don't have the information in front of me.
Dirk, was that part of CUSAC? Was that evaluated as part of CUSAC?
The equity plan?
Yes.
Yes. That's part of CUSAC. And so, we have to have a statement of insurance every year. The equity plan really checks that we have updated policies that address the issues.
Okay, and as far as another meeting, we are contemplating, normally in August we do not meet, but we are contemplating having another meeting in August for all the reasons that you said because we do not know, the situation that we confronted 10 days ago is not the situation we're confronting now and the situation we confront in another 10 days. It's probably not the situation we're confronting now. So, we are, we will be in the next 48 hours finalizing another meeting date, an August meeting date. And as soon as we have that, we will let people know. And of course, we are legally required to provide 48 hours notice. By way of advertising, we will do that, but as soon as we determine a date that we can get together in August, we will do that. Thank you. I see Chris Savio. Chris?
Yep. Hi, Betsy. It's actually Mary.
It's Mary. You were, you were DuPontes before. Now you're.
I had some track issues earlier. Sorry. So.
Okay, thank you for coming back.
So, yes. So, Mary Lynn Savio, speaking on behalf of the Glen Ridge Education Association. And I also wanted to just acknowledge that, you know, we recognize how hard all the administrators have been working to meet this mandate and that, you know, the mandate is coming from the governor. With that said, you know, we were among those who signed the letter from the Essex County Education Association because we do have serious concerns about safety. And I think, you know, we hope that those can be addressed to make it safe. We would like nothing better than to return in-person instruction as long as it's safe to do so. So, I just want to follow up on some of the things that have already been said. And one of our greatest concerns is the amount of exposure, particularly at the high school. Students will be changing classes every period. So, that means that at a minimum, they're getting exposed to 12 different students, as are their teachers in eight different classes. Granted, some of those will be some of the same students, but not all of them. That's a lot of exposure. The biggest concern about that exposure is, you know, what can be controlled and what can't be controlled. We appreciate all the safety protocols and the PPE. We certainly advocate for stronger PPE if that's possible. But biggest concern is ventilation. Ventilation is known to be an issue in the buildings. I appreciate, you know, I've been doing some research myself, by no means an expert, but I look forward to seeing those results that Mr. Romano talked about for the meeting, the CFM requirements. And I also had a question about what the MERV rating would be because I read that that is a critical factor. I didn't hear that mentioned. So, I'd like to get that. And in particular, you know, I understand that, you know, the systems are new at all the other buildings, but at the high school, clearly it's not. And you also mentioned the outside airflow and it is my understanding that there is very little outside airflow that are, is recirculated air, which is of course very concerning. And another particular thing I'd like to see addressed is the small offices. Even a Plexiglas barrier does not seem sufficient and some of the offices that really constitute nothing more than almost a closet. So, I don't know if there's something to be done about that. Thank you.
Okay, Dirk or Paul, do you want to address those concerns?
So Dirk, I'm happy to address at least the issues pertaining to the mechanical systems. You know, as I remarked earlier, we're kind of fortunate that we had the benefit of these HVAC improvements now completed throughout the vast majority of the district. Reviewing the ASHRA guidance, the NGA guidance, seems as if we should be able to attain all the provisions described therein, both in terms of the volume of air as well as increasing filtration to the degree that it's possible within the equipment. MERV filters, as you may be familiar, is a measure to what degree size particulate that a filter may capture. There are provisions of the equipment that require us to, to size those filters, that level of filtration relative to the capacity of the equipment to move air. There are control strategies that we can employ to, to increase the volume of air as well as the duration of the air. The expression in the industrial hygienist community is the solution to pollution is dilution. So, the, so in this scenario, I'm assuming that the same principle applies, which is to the degree that we are increasing the volume of air, that that air is not being recirculated amongst spaces. I think we will have satisfied at least the professional guidance that we've, we've seen to date. I'm not representing myself as an expert, certainly not a health expert. I'm going to follow the guidance of those professionals, working with the facility staff to see that we can attain to the greatest degree possible the, the safety of documents.
Hey Dirk, anything to add?
I would just add, with the office areas, those are obviously some concerns that we have just because they're not as large as we would like or the, those who are in those offices, spaces would like. But that's one, why we're putting the Plexiglas in those spaces to create a safer environment. There should be airflow in all those offices, spaces. And that's something that we're checking on to make sure that we're, we're having our maintenance contractor come out and taking a look at the high school to make sure it's working effectively.
Okay, thank you. Sheri Dryer. Sheri, you can unmute.
Sheri, we need you. My screen freaked out on me. Okay, first of all, um, thank you all very much. I just want to mention that graduation I thought was really, really well done. I've been through to, to a few before and it was even, the drone was the special treat and the live stream was very well done. That was something I had spoken with Dirk about, Mr. Phillips about several years ago. So, I really, really liked it. I may be misunderstanding. My question is about clubs and activities and I wanted to raise that, about drama club and theater. There is so much spectacular, so many spectacular things being done now virtually with theater and arts performances. My son, who's a, by the way, I live in Glen Ridge and my son is a rising senior and my son actually has been working as a virtual stage manager this summer. And it's, it's remarkable what's being done. I think Mr. Pavlov, if he's still on the call, really, I understand is an expert about this. So, I'd like to ask that that be considered to go forward, that that club, drama club and whatever other arts in that way can go forward. And also, we might, they might attract new students who are without something to do. I also want to ask about clubs like National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, French Club, Flash, French Honor Society. I also want to give a plug for, I'm very, I'm concerned for the teacher health as well and the staff health and the administrators. They're the resources that make our, they're the foundation of what makes Glen Ridge such a great district. I know you all are concerned with that too, but I just want to echo that.
Thank you. Dirk, clubs and activities, especially drama?
This is one of, Rob Hale's directives is to get input from the club advisors, what they can do, what they can offer them and determine if it's a meaningful experience. Certainly, if they're able to do it virtually, it's something that we would strongly consider. We're not looking to eliminate, but we want to make sure that if clubs are, if the clubs are not running, then we shouldn't be approving payment for individuals. I think when we start looking at some of the other clubs that she mentioned, the honor societies, there's math, world language or national honor society, those clubs will continue to run because of, you know, it's more of achievement award that the advisors are working with and they're providing a lot of tutoring services that we want to make sure that we'll continue whether we're in a live situation or a virtual situation. So, we're not looking to eliminate all the clubs. We're just evaluating which ones can be operational under a virtual or a shortened day hybrid model.
Okay, thank you. Felicia Berger. Felicia Berger?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I was, I had many questions, but given the two-minute timeline, I'd like to just focus on how the district is planning to accommodate virtual learning in a little more detail. As of today, we're asking a lot of our teachers, they have five minutes less time in each period to teach. We're asking to effectively teach in person as well as to a remote cohort. Teaching in person is very different than effectively teaching remotely. So, what support is being provided to the teachers to effectively tailor their lessons to in-person and remote learning? What technology is being provided to teachers so that the remote cohort can remain visible to instructors, not just a dot on a screen? And what technology is being provided to teachers so that remote students can hear and visually follow the teacher lessons and classroom discussion? Will teachers be provided with any additional training on how to effectively teach remotely? And I realize the state mandate is, for an all-virtual option is relatively new, but can you provide a timeline for when the plan will be available to parents? Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Part of training has happened over the summer as far as the technology to provide some virtual instruction. When we open the school year, we have two days of professional, staff days. Part of those days will be used to work with the staff in developing structural techniques when you have part of your classroom on a virtual experience where they're, they're coming into the classroom. Teachers are, we get, are given devices, whether it's Chromebooks or laptops, that will be set up along with the PC and permission boards that they have in the classroom as part of the technology to help stream the, the lessons that's going on into the classroom. As far as to accommodate virtual or to the development of virtual, we are looking at what we did last year and taking what we did well last year from the virtual experience and trying to integrate it and enhance it. I think some of the lessons that we learned is that we needed to be more synchronized. We needed to provide some more live interaction and we needed to provide some more teacher-parent. I, I think we're also looking at ways that we can do more small, small groups in a virtual setting, which you can do through breakout groups. So, we're looking to implement those strategies that seem to be best practices and then more effective when we're looking at virtual instruction.
Can I just follow up on that?
Briefly. Felicia, we lost you.
So, in order for a teacher to be effective, they need to be able to steer their students. And if they're standing in a classroom, they can see a student face-to-face. But they are also now being asked to monitor a screen for when a student needs to raise their hand in the remote cohort to ask a question. It seems an impossible situation to ask our teachers to be doing that. We don't have cameras. We don't have video boards. We don't have microphones for teachers to be able to effectively teach both cohorts at the same time. So, I'm asking, is the school considering those technology infrastructure items in order to benefit or make this system work?
We are not looking at putting in a video monitor to monitor the students online. When teachers are working, they could flip that and they're not using the permission board. They could flip the image onto the permission board to monitor the students in a bigger format and a large monitor setting. To answer your question about when you receive information about the virtual-only program, this is, again, I'm looking to send out a information by the end of the week to the parents about our virtual-only options.
Okay, thank you. Mr. or Ms. Moyers? Moyers? I don't see Moyers. Okay, Gregory McDonald. Gregory McDonald, please unmute yourself. Gregory McDonald? You're still muted. Gregory McDonald, please unmute yourself. Okay, I see Julianne Agala Papa? Julianne Agala Papa?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, my name's all squished together. This is Julianne Agala Papa. I have a son who would be entering kindergarten at Linden. I was wondering, I have a few questions. The first is, how much flexibility will there be for the youngest students in terms of attendance and what the expectations are for them? I, I've heard from parents in other districts that some of their children weren't really able to participate virtually in kindergarten. So, just kind of how will the teachers work with the parents and the youngest students who've never been to kindergarten before and might be doing it for the first time over a computer? How that whole thing will be navigated and what exactly the, their attendance expectations are? And then related to that, if you were to opt out and homeschool, is there flexibility, given the current situation, that if the, the data changes, that you could enter back into the school system with a certain amount of notice? And then more broadly, something that doesn't affect me necessarily directly, but just wondering if the focus is more on the virtual or the in-person, being that the virtual is the one thing that we know will happen for the whole year? And it also seems like it relies very heavily on how savvy each individual teacher is with technology and how flexible of a thinker they are and on their toes they are. I'm wondering if there are workshops planned to help teachers navigate this very challenging situation? And then I also just wanted to encourage you to look at the idea of outdoor classrooms for the youngest students, especially for those where there are models that can be followed for outdoor programs for especially like K through three.
Thank you.
Sure.
As far as outdoor classrooms, I think that we've taken care of that in a previous questioner. But Dirk, can you address the other concerns?
Yeah, a question about flexible attendance. Our expectation that when we have a, at grade level, live instruction going on, whether they're in the AM or PM group, that they are attending school on a regular basis. This is why we're providing a live model. As far as the, the virtual component that would happen there opposite their live model, there's expectation that it's being completed, the teachers are preparing the lessons. So, our expectations, part of meeting the curriculum requirements, whether it's in related arts or social studies and sciences, that they're completing the lessons and participating in them. Homeschool flexibility, if a parent decides to homeschool their child, they will have the ability to re-enroll, re-enroll their child when they feel they're want to. That's part of having that homeschool option. having that homeschool option, that they always have a right to enter to their local public school. As the focus of virtual versus live right now, their focus is more on the live currently because it's newer, there's a lot more protocols that have to be put in place that we haven't experienced before. That does not mean we're ignoring the virtual, the principals and the committees are working to enhance the virtual experiences and they were, are continuing to develop them, knowing for a while that there's, on all likelihood, at one point, we will be back in a virtual experience. And that answers all our questions.
Okay. Bernice Clark. Bernice?
Hi. Hi, this is Bernice Clark Bonnet, resident. I just had a few questions about the high school day. And for the day, are there certain classes that are happening in the morning and then certain classes that are happening in the afternoon? So, is the schedule that we received a few weeks ago not the schedule that they'll have, or they might have a different schedule? That's my first question. My second question is about, you mentioned student mentoring programs. I wanted to better understand what that meant and who would be mentoring and what sort of training they'd be doing. And then, just a third question, just about the clubs piece of it. It said in the PowerPoint, I believe, that some clubs could be done, but only if they happened during the day. So, I just didn't know what that really meant. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this moment, we're planning on running a high school schedule periods one through eight, so that the schedule that you received as your child's schedule would be the schedule that they'd be running through. But instead of having a 42-minute period, they'd be having a 35-minute period. As far as student mentor, we're looking at the possibility, and this is just in the works, of making sure that every student is assigned a teacher and that teacher would do checkups. And obviously, we would train the teachers on the mentoring component, just to make sure that we're touching bases with every student on a regular base. And for those who are having difficulties, that we're aware of it earlier, that there's a common person who's having discussions with the individual. And if there needs to be a greater intervention, that we're giving them the resources of providing an individual can give them greater services. And clubs, as I mentioned earlier, the high school and Ridgewood Avenue are evaluating which clubs can be operational in an effective manner. When they went through this during the spring, some clubs remained very active and other clubs were not as active as we would want from a club, especially those who are approved by the board. And there's an expectation of the number of meetings and the number of activities that are happening. So, we're just asking that the principals and the director of student activities review that and make the recommendation.
Thank you. Maureen?
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, great. Yes.
I, as a member of this community, I think we're all painfully aware how deadly this disease can be, even if you're not in a risk group. And my concern is with an AB switch, daily switching, with the exposure, isn't the chances that this could be transmitted among wider groups higher if you're switching every day? And given that in New Jersey, we're seeing spikes in communities, mainly in Monmouth County, as far as my information is, but we are seeing spikes. So, it's a major concern to me. And if we were having the survey that you gave out a couple of weeks ago today, I think my answer, which was unsure at the time, would be more strongly to, I would not send my children. And I'm concerned, I think that we did a great job virtually in Ridgewood Avenue. I have two rising fifth graders. It worked. I get that you might not all agree with having to be face-to-face, it's the mandate. But I would be concerned that we might be underestimating the number of people who would choose to go totally virtually.
Thank you. I think, I'm sorry. I think that you may be right, but we still, until the governor does not insist on an in-person learning opportunities for children, we have to proceed along two tracks. But we certainly are cognizant of the risks. We all know how deadly this virus is. We are aware of the spikes elsewhere in New Jersey. So, it is never, ever far from our minds. Caitlin Turan?
Can I just get Maureen's full name?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Maureen?
Maureen Mica.
Maureen, thank you so much. Now, Caitlin Turan?
How are you doing, ma'am? Mr. Phillips, you didn't answer all of the questions asked by Harris Turan, so I'm going to re-ask them. It's our understanding the assurance plan is voted on annually. Is that, is that correct, the assurance plan for the CEP?
The statute of insurance, yes.
Yes. So, we went back through the agendas for the meetings, and the last vote that we could see listed in the agenda was on July 24, 2017. I think that's the date you mentioned that you didn't, you didn't recall when Harris was asking. So, that's the last time we could find the vote for the assurance, which was on school year 1718. I don't expect you to know the dates of the votes, but could you please get back to us with an email on when the assurance plan for 18 and 19, as well as 19 and 20 were voted on? And then I also want to confirm that you did agree that this, the CEP would be posted to the district site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Lisa Petrucci? Lisa Petrucci? Yes, Lisa?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Lisa Petrucci. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Forest and I'm a new school. And this meeting has been very enlightening to me. First, I'd like to thank everyone on here, the parents, the administration, and the Board of Ed for taking their time over the summer and working so diligently on this monumental task, which obviously no one, we're never going to have a, no one's going, we're not going to be able to please everyone. But I do have a few questions regarding kindergarten and some custodial issues. As you know, I teach now the youngest children in Forest Avenue School, and we do not have desks, we have tables. And I also, this year, happen to have the largest class in the school, which means I will, if everybody chooses to come to school, which it sounds like maybe they won't be, I will have 12 students. So, that is a concern for me with the social distancing and also with the masks. And knowing that kindergarten is such an important year, and it's such a year to, for visual stimulation for the kids, I was hoping that the primary grades would be able to have face shields instead of face masks, because especially in kindergarten and pre-K, just talking to the children and teaching them the letter sounds is so important for the kids to see our faces. So, I was hoping that we would be able to get those. My second question is about the custodians. I know that Mr. Phillips spoke about the, having extra custodians coming in. I was hoping that that custodian would be the same custodian coming into the building continuously, so we don't have different people in and out of the building. And my third question is about what probably most of this conversation has been tonight, about the virtual learning versus the live learning. And seeing that the primary school teachers will be teaching from 8:30 to 3 o'clock, I don't know how or if I would be that same person to be teaching, say, a class of virtual learners. And if, and if the numbers grow, Dirk, and there's more and more children choosing the virtual option, where are those teachers going to come from? Would a teacher who would opt to stay home, would they be able to teach multiple classes, like a K1 class? I think that's our biggest concern in the primary level, is that I don't know how I'm going to teach from 8 to 3 and do the virtual learning at the same time.
Thank you. Dirk?
Those are details that, you know, without numbers, it's difficult for me to answer as far as are we dedicating a virtual-only teacher? And that's a possibility. But until we get definite numbers, I can't answer that question. And those are, as far as the custodian being the same one that comes in the buildings, I believe we can do that. One of the things you need to remember when you're talking about teaching from 8 to 3, you're getting, you know, your contractual preps, that your day is a little bit different now because you're teaching two cohorts, same material in the morning and the afternoon, so that your prep's a little bit less. We're continuing to work, when I say we, the principals and I are trying to find a way to alleviate some of the virtual requirements that would happen to, if we're looking at doing science and social studies through a virtual method. And those are things that we're going to be working out with the building principals as we're completing this plan. So, I advise you to reach out to Mr. Murphy and have those discussions with him.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Vanderstoe? Lynn Vanderstoe? Lynn Vanderstoe? Has Lynn left us? No? Lynn Vanderstoe?
Oh, no. Hi, I'm here. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I specifically had a question about the after and before care plan that was mentioned at Forest and Linden. If you are allowing children to come in for before care, for example, will the cohorts be commingled at that point? For example, the kindergartners mixed with the first graders and the second graders, and then sent off to their respective classrooms, which you've diligently kept apart for the rest of the day? And I guess also, my question would be regarding notification within the school community, which I think was touched on but not fully explained. For example, if, you know, a child or a parent within one of the classrooms is like reporting to the school that he or she tests positive, then at what point does the rest of the school community become notified of that infection?
Dirk?
As far as before care, you know, again, it's, we're developing the safety of protocols for that, but it really depends on numbers. If we only have, you know, eight kids, which means we only have one worker, we can't sit there and isolate and have three different workers for the different cohort. So, those are something that we'll look at. But those students in before care will be following the same safety protocols to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for them. As far as notification, if we have a positive case, much like we would, I believe we might have had a situation in the spring, if I remember correctly. I will notify the district. I wouldn't be given, obviously, details. I would just notify that there would be, that there was a positive case in the district. I'd probably mention the building, but as far as notifying individuals who may be at risk, that is the job of the Board of Health with our assistance, as far as I'm concerned at this point. And that's what I've been informed of from a state level and from a local level.
Okay, thank you. George Kilgan? George Kilgan? George? George? He's disappeared from my screen. Okay, George, if you are there, we'll try to get back to you.
Oh, hi, George. Hi, how are you?
Just fine. How are you doing tonight?
Good, good. I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. My question has two questions about marching band and about sports. If they have marching band, will they be practicing in the band room? And if they have sports like soccer, will they be taking buses to trips, or will the parents be taking them?
If we have marching band, we'd be expected to be practicing outside. And again, we're developing the protocols based on the professional organization recommendations. And Mr. Hill will be working with Dr. Gage to make sure that those are in place and followed. As far as a soccer game, the district is responsible for transporting. And this is where the challenge becomes on districts, and where additional busing may be needed. When we do bus, it would have to follow the guidelines of the road back, so that there is a limited amount of seats on a bus. And it might mean us not taking as many students, athletes to a game, only those that are needed. It may mean us having multiple buses, where in the past it would, one bus would suffice. But that could be difficult, if this is the problem with every district, because it's all, transportation for after-school activities is always challenging, where all the districts are jockeying to get the transportation needed for their school district.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, good night.
Liz Motley? Mr. or Ms. Motley?
Unmute. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Lizzy. I teach at Forest, Ridgewood, and Linden Avenue Schools. My concern is the CDC put out guidelines for when they were opening up businesses and for the safety of the students and for the staff. They have rules for implementing new HVAC systems. We have them now in the three schools. Were HEPA filters put in place? Was the ultraviolet termination and radiation, the UV GI, also in place? They also recommend filtering the air two hours before and two hours after, when you're opening and when you're closing the school, where the students would be. Are we going to be able to do that? Also, you recommended that we were going to give masks to the teachers and the staff. What types of masks are you actually going to supply? And on the idea of plexiglass in between the students, I think it's a good idea, because you're going to have students that wear masks for four hours, and now they really do need to take a drink sooner or later, and then at least you would have this barrier. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you want to speak to your?
Sure. So, as I mentioned earlier, we should be, we're exploring our options now, but we believe we can come into full compliance with the NGEA recommendations, which are, again, developed by the National Ashray Organization. I do, however, want to make a few clarifications. These are not HEPA filters. These are, the level of filtration is referred to as MERV. It does not reach a HEPA-level spec. You would not even find a HEPA in a hospital facility, typically. At most, you'd see something akin to like a MERV 13. And whereas that, where that is possible, it is our intent to meet that standard. But I must caution you, that's not possible in all instances. And then, as it pertains to UV radiation and other such methods, that is not part of the recommendation as it stands. There are individual units that can be employed for that purpose. It's not our intent to use that at this time, but we do specifically intend to address some of the other control strategies you mentioned, about the volume of air, the duration of air that will be circulated for the period of time, that'll be circulated, again, in the spirit of diluting any pathogens that may be present in the space.
Okay. Moyers, I think we lost you before, but welcome back. Can you hear me?
Could Dr. Phillips talk about the masks and about the shields? Could Dr. Phillips talk about the masks and about the shields?
Brusley, yes. Dirk?
Right now, we are providing cloth masks that are reusable and washable. I know there's been some mention about N95 masks. But they are only available to healthcare workers, from my understanding, at this time. They are not available for public use. You can't get access to it, from what I've been informed. And face shield, we are providing some face shields for some staff members and based on what they may be teaching, along with some students who may have restrictions to wearing a face mask.
So what about the shields on the desks as one parent product?
We do not have intentions on putting shields on desks at this time.
Okay, we're going to have people that are working about four hours and they're not able to take a mask off.
Thank you, Ms. Motley. Charlie Breslin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Charlie.
Okay, thank you all so much. I just, it's been three hour meeting where you've discussed the plan and without doubt, you've tried to think of everything. And I don't think it's possible to think of everything, and there's so much on the line. It's coming to me that there's a consensus that we're not comfortable as a whole about going back to school. And the issue that people are coming to is it's not for the school board. We're having to follow, as Mr. Phillips said, the state's mandate. My takeaway from this meeting is I'm going to be writing a letter to Governor Murphy tomorrow, calling his office, calling Cleopatra Tucker, our assembly person, calling Ralph Caputo, our assembly person, Ronald Rice, our senator. And at the very least, I don't think the governor's mandate of one policy for all is going to work. And here in Glen Ridge, at least, it seems to me that you have spent so much time and so much effort where really we should be focusing on virtual school. Because I fear we'll be in school after all of this for three to four weeks tops. And I think the issue is our administrators are trying so hard to reach the governor's mandate, and it may not be the right thing. And I think as parents, if we're interested in talking to the Board of Education, we should talk to our state leaders and perhaps even ask the board to make a declaration to the state government. But thank you all so much for trying to do the impossible, and you're doing it so well.
Thanks, Charlie. And I think for anybody who wants to write to Governor Murphy or legislators, you just search on Governor Murphy. It will take you to the governor's homepage, which you can do.
I'll post everything on the forum tomorrow.
Great, that would be great, Charlie. That will save everyone an extra step. Thank you. Tricia?
Okay, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, that's a great picture, by the way.
Thank, oh, I don't even know what picture that is, but okay.
You and Michelle Obama and maybe your child?
Yep, my daughter. I am asking this question on behalf of my daughter. My sixth grader would like to know, what are they going to do when they have fire drills and what did she say, fire drills?
Emergency drills, lockdown drills?
And lockdown drills, yeah. She said that they usually go into close corners or into closets with each other. So she wants to know what are they going to do in that instance? And I echo Charlie's sentiments, which he just stated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been asking that question for probably a month and a half and have not gotten a response from the state level, from the DOE or the state offices. So as soon as I get an answer, I will, I'll put that, we plan on putting FAQ. I will put that up on our FAQ and leave it blank until there's an answer.
Great, thank you. I think we've come to, I don't see any other hands. Oh, one, Gregory McDonald, sorry. Gregory McDonald?
Yeah, I think, thank you for taking my question. So I have three kids in the school system. Yeah, I want to, you know, commend the board and the superintendent for all their efforts, and it's not easy. And, you know, there's, you know, clearly a lot of differing opinions about whether or not the kids should be back in school. I guess the first thing I'd say is, you know, there's clearly a lot of folks that are uncomfortable. I think for those that are comfortable, I want to make sure that we're not depriving the kids of any in-school education, which, you know, many, I think, feel are really important. Second, just acknowledge the need for both qualitative and quantitative, you know, aspects of measuring all this, you know. And Mr. Phillips, I think you, you know, you seem to have a very good handle and, you know, on that aspect. And, you know, I don't think purely quantitative, just addressing, you know, something was raised earlier, purely quantitative, you know, aspects to this are going to be, you know, clearly what, you know, what drives this. I guess my questions are, you know, one, you know, what are the incremental financial needs? Are there going to be any, you know, incremental tax burdens on the district? Second, you know, there may be families that, you know, if they are educating remotely, what are the considerations to, you know, if they are residing in the district on a primary basis, but, you know, relocate for a temporary period of time? What are the considerations there? Thank you for addressing my questions.
Thank you. I will tell you that as far as the finances and the tax burden, this COVID-19 crisis will place a very heavy burden on all school districts in the state. We've already agreed, we've already created and had our budget approved for this year. We have had a cut to our financial aid, which if you look at the end of your agendas, you will see we face the possibility of perhaps another cut to our financial aid. We don't know that yet. The governor will make a speech on August 25th that will lay out the budget for the truncated FY21 fiscal year. No one has any idea yet what that budget will be or whether we'll take further cuts with regard to the tax burden. For this year, we can't go out for more taxes this year. Next spring, in the normal timeframe, excuse me, we will make a budget. And, but it's too soon to say what the effect on the tax burden will be.
And the second part, as far as remote instruction, we're working with families if they're temporarily relocated. You know, we understand there's always unique circumstances, and we've always been willing to work with families.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. I see Shilpa Patel's hand, but I believe that we've already had a question from Shilpa Patel. So please, Shilpa, please save your question for the second public comment period. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's try, I see Moyers again, and I don't believe, I keep, we keep missing you. Moyers? Moyers?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Anita Nikki Moyar. I have an upcoming pre-care and then my child was in, older child was in kindergarten. So we feel like we're being robbed of this wonderful experience, and we all are in the same book. So what I'm about to say is that is no reflection of what you're doing. But this is what I have to say, is that going virtual, that's where our focus should be. Because that should be our Plan A, and in-person is Plan B. Because, you know, our district is a wealthy district. We can raise funds, we can get cameras or plexiglass or anything. But the moment our inner city schools or any other district would have higher cases, the same governor, Governor Murphy, going to ask to close all the schools. So then we're going to be left with no solid virtual plan. So I really, really want us to please, if we can, put the same emphasis on virtual learning.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Phillips did address that, that we are, because we know that whether we are virtual only in September or we have to go virtual three weeks in, we have to have that virtual Plan B. So I think that there is nothing that you've said that we disagree with. But thank you. Dina M. Dina M?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a town resident. I have a rising first grader at Linden. I've heard a lot of the concerns, I think, that parents have with the onsite instruction. But I do want to commend the district for offering both virtual and instruction plans. While I understand, you know, people are concerned, I am concerned as well. And I don't know that I will send my son to onsite instruction, but I haven't made up my mind yet. I feel like both options have to be offered. I understand people are not always comfortable to send their kids in. And, you know, the virtual option appears to be there. So I don't understand why people are pushing to get rid of the onsite instruction. That does concern me. I think the whole idea behind the governor's plan is to offer, you know, what people might find suitable for their families. So I really am a bit dismayed by the push to get rid of the onsite instruction. I understand the difficulty. I understand that you are making plans and protocols are being, are being put in place to ensure the safety of our kids. Obviously, you know, we can't plan for everything and things will have to be, you know, will have to change as we progress. But I think it is critical that both options be offered. That was my comment. And I do have one question. I missed the answer. In terms of the plexiglass dividers that could be offered, you know, that could help with, especially with the younger students? Can you, I know you said that's not being considered, Dr. Phillips, but can you please explain why that is? I have a first grader, first graders and, you know, smaller children tend to have a hard time keeping their hands to themselves. So it would be helpful, especially when they take their masks off, to have something, you know, that would divide them from their nearby neighbors or, you know, students nearby. So can you please comment on that, exactly what the reason is why that's not being considered at this time? Thank you.
Yes, the reason that they're not being considered is the plexiglass is serving mainly the same purpose as a mask does. So we're requiring our students to wear a mask as far as if a student for removes their mask or pulls it down for a short period of time and redirect to put it on, our students are still going to be socially distanced in the classroom. So that's the protection in that sense. We're socially distancing in the classrooms, plus we're wearing a mask.
Thank you. Amanda McCabe? Amanda McCabe?
Hi.
Hi.
I have a child at Ridgewood and a child at Forest. This is obviously a huge undertaking, and I give you a lot of credit for all of your planning and consideration. With that said, is it an option, and forgive me if this has already come up, but is it an option for us to delay the start of school? I'm also wondering if you could clarify, were you saying that families that opt to do virtual only school will have a teacher other than the teacher they are currently assigned to? I'm wondering who these separate teachers would be? Thank you very much.
I think we have not discussed delaying the start of school. We have to be cognizant of the 180-day rule that is required of us by the state. Dirk?
Yeah, just along those lines, any changes to the calendar must be board approved. But it also then starts infringing on our calendar breaks that we have or potentially the end of June, which we need to fulfill the 180-day requirement before July 1st. So it would be only minor delays. I know a couple of districts have pushed back their start of school year, but they've loaded up their professional days and have taken them away. We only have one professional day built into our calendar. The rest are half-days. So we only have flexibility of changing by one day if you're going to take away or move up the professional days. And the second question was, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I did not write it down. It was. Tiffany, if you can hear us, what was your second question again?
It was Amanda.
All right, sorry, I'm sorry.
Whether they would get a separate teacher for virtual, yes.
Yes, so there's a possibility. Again, we need to look at the numbers. We have, let's say in third grade, we have 24 kids who want an all-virtual experience. We would consider then dedicating a teacher to those 24 kids. It's a discussion. It's, we haven't decided on, and this is part of me speaking with our administrators and going back to our instructional committee to have those discussions of going off to offer an all-virtual experience.
Okay, thank you. Tiffany Ludwig, I apologize. Somewhat long evening. Tiffany Ludwig?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I have three questions. So this relates to the one that was, I have two children in Ridgewood Avenue School. If a family chooses virtual learning in September, and there is a unique virtual learning teacher assigned to that student who is not their currently assigned teacher, the school goes all remote at some point, let's say, because of the virus. Does the virtual teacher-student then get to rejoin their original classroom with their original teacher? My second question is if, and this was spoken at some point, and I just want to make sure that I understand this. If you homeschool your child, you can rejoin the school year at any point. But if you opt for virtual learning in September, you'll need to wait for a designated time period. And my third question and last one is, has the model been considered where a teacher teaches from their classroom, but all of the students are remote? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rejoining the class, Dirk, from virtual to in-person?
She was asking if we dedicated a teacher to the virtual-only students. And then we have to go, then, let's say the state calls, informs the district that they must be completely virtual. Will we send them back to their original assigned teacher? I think that's a discussion I would have with the building principals about the format and procedures. I think a little bit is also only for time, once they've, the classes start forming some bonds. Now, let's say they're in a virtual-only experience for a month and a half, two months. I would probably keep them in with the same teacher based on their experiences and forming bonds as a classroom unit. But that is a scenario that we, I would have to discuss with the building principals. As far as homeschool and as a homeschool situation, you are withdrawing your student, your child from the school system. As a resident, you have a right to re-enroll your student then. And so that's the possibility. Under the guidelines of the virtual-only experience, it's stated that we can, the school system can create conditions for going into that situation. And you can understand why districts would want to, to make sure that they're able to operate in an effective manner when it comes to developing the homeschool program, I mean, the home, the virtual-only program. We cannot have people coming in and out of the virtual-only, going back into their classroom and back out. It just, and perhaps being with different teachers, it just wouldn't be an effective process. So we want to make sure that when we are setting up the process of virtual-only, it's done in a manner that we're considering some of the challenges that we have with for it.
Okay. Thank you. We have two more questioners, and then we will continue with the rest of our meeting. Jennifer Chang?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a teacher at the high school, and I have an upcoming kindergartner and an upcoming third grader at Ridgewood Avenue. Hi, I'm a teacher at the high school, and I have an upcoming kindergartner and an upcoming uh third grader at Ridgewood Avenue. And I actually don't have any questions, but possibly some solutions. Um, as far as the Plexiglas, I know that's a concern about it being very expensive, but I know um that there is actually plastic foldable um dividers that students could purchase for just 20 bucks each. Like, I know I spent $50 on three Glen Ridge masks. That could be a fundraising thing, but just to have the dividers so that each kid could take it with them portably to each class so that they're responsible for cleaning it themselves. And so that was my first thing about plastic foldable dividers. Second was, um, I know Montclair came out with their plan, and they're doing a Wednesday deep cleaning. And I thought that'd be a great idea for us because if we have students who do the A-Day, B-Day, um, so you're getting some kids that have in-class learning three times a week, and then the next week it's twice a week. So that could be very confusing, especially for my middle schoolers as far as organization goes, like knowing how many times a week they have each class. Um, and then finally, I was just wondering if we do go back to this hybrid, um, if the first two days could possibly be full-on virtual just to get everyone on board as far as just the first two days of the school year?
I think we've noted your suggestions. Dirk, what about the full-on virtual days?
Um. It, it's something we can look at and discuss as committee. Um, I'm not sure um the, the, the benefits of it. Um, to be honest, uh, it's something that, um, Ja- Jennifer, if you want to reach out to me and, and just speak to me a little bit more about it, I'm, I'm more than happy to have that discussion with you. Um, as far as being confused, uh, you know, an A-B day could be confused middle school kids, I'm confident that they could happen. At Ridgewood, they ran through a day, one through six, and every day was a little bit different um based on the classes they had, the specials they had, so I'm sure they can follow an A-B day.
Okay. Uh, Richard Ten. Richard Ten?
Oh, hi. Sorry, I, I don't know why my name says that. I apologize. That's why I didn't know you were addressing me.
It's okay. So some people have a completely different screen name than the one they, you normally use. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so my name's Mary Rose, and I have a upcoming third grader and a ninth grader, and I'm considering doing virtual-only. And um I have concerns for my student, my kids, because one is a 504 and the other one has an IEP. So when you talk about switching the teachers, is that going to also include services for special needs?
Okay, Dirk?
Um. We're, we're not looking to change their teachers based on their IEP. Um, if they have special needs or they're getting um whatever services they may be receiving, um, that would probably stay the same, um, and that'd probably be set up at the start of the year. Um, when you're looking to go virtual-only, then I um, I would assume that you, that their services are also going to be virtually only then, and that's something I'll, I'll discuss with um, Mr. DeWitt, um, as we're, we're looking at our, our special education component um during the hybrid.
Okay, one more. Stephanie Lee. Stephanie?
Hi, um, I have two kids, one's at Forest and one's at Ridgewood. Um, I just wanted to follow up on a question that Tiffany had about the model of um having the teachers basically broadcast from the school um out to the kids so that they have like the semblance of them being in school, um, but safely distanced. Um, if you were consider, if that's a model you've been considering. And then secondly, this might be a silly question, and may just all get answered by Friday. What if the majority of the district, uh, the, the households decide to go virtual?
Then those households will go virtual, but until the governor says that um, we're all going virtual, we will still have to offer an in-person option.
As far, as far as the first uh point you were bringing, um, if we were in a virtual-only experience uh situation and could it be possible for the teachers to um broadcast from their classroom where I, I think it would depend uh on what the mandate is from the state. If you're calling the spring, um, only essential workers were to report to their place of employment. Um, and being under a virtual-only mandate, teachers do not fall under that. Um, if there's some liberties and freedoms, I, I think as a teacher, there's some advantages of being able to come in during the workday in your classroom, um, not at a risk because students are not there um a- and broadcast from your classroom, but I think that would end up being an individual teacher's choice a- and not something we would mandate um based on us, um, this, this school's, excuse me, being closed down.
Okay, um, that concludes the first question period. Um, on your agendas, uh, board members, you see that it is time for committee liaison reports, which we normally have at the first meeting of the month. Uh, I don't believe there's anything that's time-sensitive because most committees are not meeting. Does anyone have anything that is time-sensitive?
I don't have time-sensitive, Betsy, but I just feel that we would be remiss if we didn't thank. I know it's been a long night, but if we didn't thank Mr. Lawler, all the administration, IT, for the graduation that they afforded to our seniors, it was very meaningful and very special, and I just want to say thank you also to Dirk for allowing for that. It meant a lot to our kids. I know they're gone now, but thank you so much.
Absolutely. I think that it's never too late or too early to say thank you. Uh, so you have in your packet some minutes from the board meeting of June 16th, both exec session and regular session. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes?
I have no changes, but I think the date was the 15th.
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, it just says 16, so that's wrong on the agenda, but to the um minutes of the 15th, any changes? Okay, that being the case, uh, Michael, would you move the minutes?
I'll move M1.
Okay.
Second.
Second from uh.
Second, yeah.
Okay. Um, would you, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Ms. Boil Valucci?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Delu?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Ramon? Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yaris Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg?
Hi. All right, we have administrative items, A1 and A2, uh, the first reading of several new and revised policies and the statement of assurance. Um, David, may I have a motion for the administrative items?
Uh, I move A1 and A2.
Okay, I may have a second. Second, please?
Second.
Second from Michael. Uh, any discussion on either of those items that we have not already had? I'm sorry, um, Stephanie Lee, could you mute yourself?
Yeah, Winnie, can you mute that line?
Um, all right, uh, any discussion of those items, A1 and A2? Barbara, would you call the roll?
Mr. Byatt?
Aye.
Ms. Boil Valucci?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Delu?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Ramon?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yaris Ramos? Ms. Ginsburg?
Hi. All right, uh, personnel items, number of them. Tracy, would you move the personnel items?
Uh, I move P1 through P13, um, with the addition of the items on the addendum for P6 and P13.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Uh, in keeping with our rules, any personnel items are discussed. Uh, May, Barbara, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Ms. Boil Valucci?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Delu?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Ramon?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yaris Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg?
Hi. All right, before we move to business items, I'd like to draw your attention to B6, which are generous donations of Chromebooks license and cart for about $7,700 from the Ridgewood Avenue Home and School Association, and Chromebook licenses and cart for the same amount from the Lindon Avenue Home and School Association. Uh, thank you to both those associations for uh these latest acts of generosity, which, uh, of which there are many every year. And now, Paul, would you move the business items?
I'd like to move items B1 through B12.
All right, I may have a second.
Second.
Second by David. Uh, is there any discussion of any of these business items? Seeing none, uh, Barbara, would you call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Bonnet?
Aye.
Ms. Boil Valucci?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Delu?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Aye.
Mr. Ramon?
Aye.
Ms. St. Auburn?
Aye.
Dr. Yaris Ramos?
Aye.
Ms. Ginsburg?
Hi. Okay, uh, we've now reached the second public comment period for comments or questions on agenda or other items related to the schools. Uh, the same rules apply, so if you uh have a comment for us, please um use the raise your hand function. And forgive me, I'm just scrolling down, looking for raised hands here. I don't see raised hands.
There's, there's two, I think.
Oh, there's two, there they are, okay.
Two, Betsy.
Yep. I've just been out finding their names. Um. One moment.
It's uh Shilpa, Dan. Shilpa is un-muted.
Yes, uh, Shilpa, would, uh, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, this is Shilpa again. Again, thank you for taking um another comment from me and for your time. You know, it's getting late. Um, I think since I had asked the question, other people have addressed concern agreeing that Plexiglas might be an option that should be looked into, and that perhaps there are less expensive options than what were considered to be very expensive, I guess. Um, and I also think, you know, I don't think there's a price on our kids' heads or health, if you will, given this virus. And also, yes, they will have masks, but I think what you will expect from the K- pre-K to second and the three to six versus seven to 12 is going to be very different. And while the younger ones may be able to be um coaxed into keeping their masks on all day, if there is an option that can keep them safe that doesn't require them to have the mask on the entire time, um, or for that unexpected moment where they do need to take it off because it's uncomfortable or it's hot, uh, I think it would really be greatly considered. So I don't mean to beat the horse dead, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Larkins. Jeffrey Larkins? Jeffrey? Uh, Jeffrey Larkins, last call. Okay.
Oh.
Jeffrey Larkins, please.
This is Megan, his wife. How are you all?
That's fine, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. What's your comment?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Mrs. Larkins? Did you have a question or comment? Do you have a question or comment, Mrs. Larkins? Uh, we're not hearing you.
Well, let's move on.
Let's move on. Uh, we have John Decker, too. John Decker? John Decker? John Decker, you have your hand up? No, uh, let's move on then. Also, uh, let's see.
Hey, I just got the prompt to unmute.
Okay, John Decker, thank you.
Hey, um, I realize that you guys have lots of, um, you know, unpopular decisions to make. Um, and, and it's not easy. Um, and you've had a lot to focus on with the return to physical school. Um, I think a lot of us uh on the call tonight probably feel that unfortunately we might end up in a virtual school situation. Um, have there been any, um, any of the committees, have they considered um fundraising to uh help the virtual experience out?
Usually.
Somebody had mentioned.
You're not muted, it should.
Somebody had mentioned microphones, uh, somebody else had mentioned uh video monitors for the teachers. And, um, you know, I think we'd probably, you know, maybe even Plexiglas, uh, you know, for the onsite people, but I'm sure people would be happy to open their wallets to, um, you know, increase the uh, you know, the experience to our kids and to make the teachers' jobs um a little easier because it can't be very easy. And then the last thing, um, you know, regarding the, the kids' experience with teachers, um, you know, my kids and for other, you know, their friends say that it's super difficult to engage in the class when the teachers don't have their cameras on. Um, I, I just can't believe that you would have like a, an audio-only, you know, for the majority of the school year, like where the teachers don't turn their cameras on. Um, I, I think that the teacher should be given uh some guidance and um, you know, have people, uh, you know, from the district, you know, drop in um on the classes and kind of eavesdrop and see what's going on in these classes. Um, but that's, those are all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Dirk, can you speak to observations, teachers?
You're on mute, Dirk. You're on mute.
I know the teachers, um, uh, when people were talking about turning off their cameras, I assumed they were talking about the students. Um, I know the principals have dropped in frequently during uh the virtual lessons in the spring. Uh, I dropped in on, on teachers also. I've never experienced um, a teacher having their cameras off, but that's something that certainly will be addressed. Uh, I, I agree that um, visual and au- along with being audio is, is more um engaging than just being a, an audio version of.
Thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, Mrs. Taron? Mrs. Taron?
Yes, hi. Uh, the, I understand uh the state requires 180 days of school per school year, correct?
Can you? Yes.
Can you remind me of the state's definition of a day?
Uh, four hours. Okay, uh, one more. Uh, this is Milatello.
Thank you. Um, sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to throw out another sort of out-of-the-box idea. Um, uh, with respect to um making it such that the ninth through 12th graders um do a hundred percent virtual. Um, the high school teachers could then teach to larger groups potentially, freeing up some of those teachers to teach down and make smaller classes through the rest of the district that could then create smaller groups that you could potentially put in person. that could then create smaller groups that you could potentially put in person to reduce the, the number of, of kids that are together at one particular time. And I also did want to just throw out stressing that cameras on needs to be a requirement, in my opinion. My kids did summer camp virtually through gas lamp players, which was an incredible experience for them and incredibly engaging, cameras on for all.
Okay, thank you. Dirk, any thoughts on those suggestions?
No, I, I agree with the camera, camera on as far as.
Dirk, I would, I would point out to people that if, if a teacher is teaching from home, as many of them did last year when no one was allowed in the building, they have every right to keep the inside of their house private. I think it'll be different this year when teachers are in the schools. And obviously, gas lamp, you know, these are people who are paid to, to open their homes to people. But we can't, if teachers opt out, and there's a very small percentage of teachers that say they will and they want to teach from home, I, I think it'd be hard for us to require that they have their cameras on while they're in the privacy of their own home, but.
I was referring to students, Dave, not teachers.
Oh, okay. I think John was referring to teachers, so we might have misunderstood your question.
Yeah, not me. I was talking about kids.
Okay. Yes, I agree with that. That would be great.
As far as the high school teachers, you know, if they are teaching virtually, then they have a meeting, their contractual obligation, so they're not going to be freed up to teach lower levels. And even if we were able to combine some classes to free them up, they'd have to stay within their content area to move down. We, we have to be careful with that, with how much it frees them up and their ability to teach other courses.
Okay, I'm seeing on my, thank you, Dirk. I'm seeing on my screen Mrs. Turan and Mr. Larkins, both of whom have already asked questions. Our policy is only one opportunity per public comment period. So if you have any questions, please feel free to email them to us. We'll try to take care of them. We have.
I usually make a motion at this point.
Yes, you do.
But I, I would just say a couple things. Obviously, this is the most attendees and speakers we've had, at least in my tenure on the board.
Yes.
Which goes back 10-plus years. I, I would say a couple things. One, it's remarkable that Dirk was able to answer so many questions on the spot about a situation that he, that none of us have ever been in, no one in the history of the world has ever been in.
No.
So kudos to him. And I'd also say that we love Mr. Breslin. Everyone on the board loves Mr. Breslin and he almost always has his finger on the pulse of what's being said. I, I would caution, I think letters are essential. Letters to the governor and to legislators are essential. I think there's a lot to be said about this, but I would caution those who are ready to write a letter or feel like the most of the people in town are in favor of all virtual. I would go back and look at the surveys that Dirk showed on the slide presentation because it seems to me that the vast majority of teachers and parents would be willing to send their, their students back into schools. That may not be the majority of people who spoke tonight, but it's a lot of people that are ready to send their students back into schools. And maybe that's because the governor is mandating it and maybe not. But write letters, but I'd hate to characterize the majority of people in town as being all virtual. And, and, you know, last, I just compliment everybody on, on almost all very productive questions. Great ideas, Mrs. Chang, great ideas all around. I mean, really, almost everybody was here to, to, to have a productive discussion about this.
I agree. Now, we do have several more questioners, some of whom have not yet asked in this public comment section, but I am cognizant that it's 10:09. Board members, what's your thought?
Why don't we take additional questions by email and then we'll adjourn?
Okay. Do we have a consensus on that? Let me go over, so David, you agree with that? Michael, you agree with that? Ally?
Okay.
Paul?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Tracy?
I agree.
Heather?
I'm sorry, I missed that part. What am I agreeing on?
You're agreeing on ending the meeting and encouraging the few that still have questions to email us.
Oh, then I agree.
Okay. Anthony?
I agree.
Teresa?
I agree.
Okay, I think we have a unanimous opinion. So those of you, please, who have your hands up, please feel free to email us with your questions and we will promise to answer them promptly. And now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
May I have a second? Second from? Okay. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.